In the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Dominguez, Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario, Rouse, White, Mayor Snyder. Proclamation, Boring Week, May 14th through 20th, 2017. I'm looking forward to Friday.
We are too.
Yeah. John Edward Boreen was a native Californian who learned to be a cowboy and became one of the most important artists to portray the American West at the beginning of the 20th century. And Edward Boreen left an important and extremely accurate pictorial record of the Old West from his own personal experiences. His studios in the Arena Odobe and later in El Paso became gathering places for many important personages in the entertainment and artist communities as well as local dignitaries. Edward Boreen contributed to this community in many ways, including as one of the organizers of the first Old Spanish Days Fiesta Parade and a participant in many of the parades. He was an instructor at the Santa Barbara School of the Arts and a mentor to many aspiring artists. He and his wife Lucille lived in Santa Barbara from 1921 till his death in 1945. Edward Boreen's widow, Lucille, donated a large collection of his paintings, etchings, preliminary sketches, and personal memorabilia to the Santa Barbara Historical Society, now the Santa Barbara Historical Museum. And the Santa Barbara Historical Museum is opening a permanent gallery dedicated to the work and life story of this important figure in Santa Barbara's history. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim May 14th through 20th, 2017, as Boring Week in Santa Barbara. And thank you for your work in this. If you'd like to say whatever.
Hi. I'm not sure which way to look. Oh, hi. I'm Sharon Bradford. I'm the board president of the Historical Museum, and we are so excited about this. And for any of you also in the room, this is a really big night, Friday night. There is a fabulous Boreen Gallery being opened, and it's going to be a very special evening, so we'd love you to join us. This is Warren Miller, former president of the Historical Museum. Do you want to say something?
Thank you very much, Mayor Schneider. We're very pleased to have this proclamation, and we look forward to seeing you Friday night.
Likewise. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Changes to the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item nine, which was a notice of intent to adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire real property interest for the De La Gara Street Bridge replacement project. We have come to an agreement with the property owners involved, so this is no longer necessary.
So yay for that. Very good. All right, public comment. I have quite a number of speakers slipped here. We'll have two minutes at the podium, and we'll start with Daniel Knapp, to be followed by Cheryl Snell. Mr. Knapp? Good afternoon.
Oh, hello, everybody. I guess Frank's busy over there. That's who I wanted to speak to. Lately, there's been some media reports on how the homeless are driving people out of business in this community. I think that's hateful. I think that is wrong. It's just clearly wrong. I think who you need to look for on a business model for anybody on State Street is how much they're being charged for rent. I don't know if anyone's looked into that, but I've talked to business owners, and I really think it clearly points to socioeconomics, which also drives the homeless population up. And we haven't seen anything yet if certain people in the government have their way. And middle-class folks aren't looking too well off either. Things keep going up and up and up, and there doesn't seem to be any end in sight. It just seems to be getting worse. I live on a limited income, and things go up, and I get like maybe a 1% increase in my pay annually. And it's pretty tough. Santa Barbara's a wonderful place to live. I mean, if you're going to be homeless, this is about as good as it gets. But be that as it may, this is a national epidemic. I hope all of you are aware of that.
My bad.
You can look into that if you want. I get most of my facts from NPR Radio and KPFK, and they're the least biased of all the airwave media. And newspapers certainly aren't what they used to be. If you cared to read one, I guess you probably all online. I can't afford to have a computer.
Thank you.
Anyway, I hope you change your views on that.
Cheryl Snell will be followed by Amanda Curtis.
Good afternoon, Mayor Snyder and City Councilmembers. My name is Cheryl Snell, and I'm a member of the Unitarian Society of Santa Barbara and its Board of Trustees. I'm following up on our letter requesting that the city of Santa Barbara further support the human rights of frontline communities affected by the Dakota Access Pipeline by closing the accounts it has with banks that continue to underwrite the project. Secondly, to ask the city to join the global movement to divest financial holdings from the 200 companies ranked highest in potential carbon emissions content based on their reported reserves. In action, I'm happy to report that the Unitarian Society has already undertaken and completed. And climate strategy, our own UCSB chancellor, Henry Yang, has endorsed this past week. And thirdly, I'd like to encourage Santa Barbara to join other cities who are committing to using 100% renewable energy by 2013, 2030. Thank you very much for your work towards a just and inhabitable planet.
Thank you. Amanda Curtis will be followed by Athena Tan.
Okay. I'm Amanda Curtis, and I'm a grad student and been a resident of the area for about six years now. I've really grown to love the city and become more interested in its culture, politics, and history over the time I've been here. And I was super pleased to hear that this June 6th vote will be occurring and that there was going to be a resolution to support the, sorry, the local Chumash, or that the November resolution to support the Chumash community, and they're standing with Standing Rock. But I'd like to see the city drop its investments in Wells Fargo and Goldman Sachs, as well as into the relationship with Union Bank. It seems, like I said, I've been here for six years, and it seems like a really great city in a lot of ways, but I'd like to see it move forward and, you know, join LA, Portland, and my own hometown of Kansas City and making, sorry, I'm a mathematician, I don't do public speaking very much, and make a commitment towards a sustainable future by initially dropping those investments and then, as other people have said and may say, commit towards more sustainable fuel usage. Thank you.
Thank you. Athena Tan will be followed by John Douglas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and members of the City Council. My name is Athena Tan. I've lived in Santa Barbara for 10 years. I was really pleased to hear that the City Council will be voting on June 6th to commit to 100% clean energy within the next 15 years. I'm proud to live in a city where our elected officials care about our wider ecological footprint, and in line with that concern, I'd like to ask you to make divestment from major fossil fuel backers part of the discussion on clean energy. And most urgently, I'd like to see the city of Santa Barbara drop its investments in Wells Fargo and Goldman Sachs and end its banking relationship with Union Bank, which are all institutions funding the Dakota Access Pipeline. This is an important political moment to make a commitment to clean energy that's as broad in scope as possible. I don't think it's right to keep our backyards clean while letting more vulnerable communities around the country suffer from the poisonous impact of fossil fuels. And I know that this is something that many of you and many people in our community care about, so I hope you'll consider making us a model for the rest of the country in this regard. Thank you.
John Douglas will be followed by Clint Orr.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilors, for allowing me to speak. I've been a resident of Goleta since 2002, and I recently got married, and I'm now living in my wife's house in Santa Barbara, so I'm happy to be, finally get to vote on matters affecting the city. I want to join in the comments of the previous speakers concerning divestment from, concerning the DAPL, the Dakota Access Pipeline. Divestment has shown to work. The prime example everyone likes to point to because it's kind of an undisputable victory for justice was South Africa. South African apartheid was only successful when it hurt people in the pocketbook. And these big institutions have loyalty under our system of economics to bring returns for their shareholders, and other considerations are generally not important. The city took a wonderful step last November by making a resolution, adopting a resolution five to two, supporting the Standing Rock Sioux people. That's great. I'm not, I don't tend to diminish that in any way because oftentimes rhetoric is important, at least to show sympathy with movements and so on. But it's time for action and not just talk on this issue. There are plenty banks around, other banks besides Union Bank and the, which the other one, Wells Fargo. Particularly Wells Fargo, after the fraud they committed on millions of consumers, the city needs to get out of Wells Fargo. They're toxic.
Thank you.
Is that two minutes?
That's two minutes. You've got a clock right there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Clint Orr will be followed by David Moore, and then the final speaker will be Brian Rosen.
May I ask that this be distributed to?
Sure, you can hand it to the clerk right there.
Before I start my two minutes? It's kind of, yeah, kind of reflects on my two minutes.
That's right. Just hand it here. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, you guys got it? Okay.
Yep.
Mayor Schneider, councilmembers, good afternoon. As you know, my dance hall entertainment park is in front of you today, and the tenants have been carefully recruited as a dream team. I need to bring in just the greatest possible retailers and, that would work best in Goleta the airport. So we have as a center, this is funny, Wells Fargo. Ha ha. That's kind of funny, but they might want to do a, they had, of course, the station here in Santa Barbara in 1880, and so they would be the center of the team. Forwards are Guitar Center and Boot Barn, retailers. We can make a nice retail mall there with my forwards. The Guards are Chuck E. Cheese and Penske Racing Arcade. I think that'd be good for the kids. Of course, I'm doing the dance hall. That's 45,000 feet of dancing and romance in 18 and over, so we've got habitat for the kids. And my sixth man is the Coffee Bean. I don't think any of them are going to tap out. I think they'll all do it. So I think this deal is done unless you stop me, which is your prerogative to do so. But I do believe that I do have this, I can sign and seal it and deliver it by September 20th, as per my presentation on my RFQ. So anyway, the theme would be kind of adobe, Victorian. Gil Garcia is, I'm sure, willing to work with us. And Craig Melvin, he's AIA from Telluride. He does a lot of old 1880s kind of thing. So I hope that you, you know, consider it, and I'm going to be at the Airport Authority, of course, tomorrow with this too. So, thank you.
David Moore. And then I see Mr. Campabello waving his two minutes to you, so you have up to four minutes. Go right ahead.
Ms. Mayor, esteemed members of the council, I don't have Amanda's excuse, she doesn't do public speaking. I have done a little of it, so I'm defenseless before you to explain this. But anyway, I experienced something really beautiful this past winter with Lakota people in Standing Rock, and I want to share that with you. But first, let me say this. I've had the privilege of being on six continents, and I'm amazed at how disproportionately famous Santa Barbara is. My first trip to South Africa, I was with a friend who kept telling people he was from Los Angeles because he didn't think people would know where Santa Barbara was. My first chance speaking to a group there, I said I was from Santa Barbara, and there was a collective "oo" in the room because they were familiar with a particular soap opera by that name. So that's how they knew me, and that's how they know us, is the soap opera. But beyond the soap opera, everywhere you go around the world, people know Santa Barbara. And the word most frequently associated with the term Santa Barbara is beautiful. Now, you and I both know that when it comes to human beings, beauty can be external, but it might stop there or not go very deeply. Real beauty comes from deep within. And what I saw in North Dakota this past winter, in the tundra, in the barrenness, without the variety of foliage that we have here, without the sea and the mountains and all of that, just emptiness was I saw the beauty of humanity. I saw people who put aside their differences and they came together because they were more committed in their love for the earth than in their history of contempt or whatever they had between themselves. They were more concerned about coming together to love the earth. It's not so much about what they're against, being against fossil fuel usage or anything like that. It's what they're for. Ni wok toni means water is life. And they call themselves water protectors because deep in their heritage and their very bones is this desire to protect the environment, something that maybe has gotten overlooked but is, we are growing in consciousness of as a country and as a city. So if Santa Barbara is going to be truly beautiful, I think that it would be good for us, and we've heard about Portland and other cities, Kansas City, but I love it when Santa Barbara leads the way, when we do something good and we make the rest of the country and the world pay attention because we are doing something beautiful. And for me, it is a beautiful thing to be practitioners of socially and politically responsible investing. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Rosen, and then Jack Yucifery will be the final speaker.
I want to talk about a real danger I think we're all under. This man who's president right now, Donald Trump, and he tried to ban Muslims, and of course, he's doing terrible bombing, very misguided attempts that have killed a lot of civilians. And as important as the Dakota Access Pipeline is, it is, this is much worse. This man is a menace, and LA, Los Angeles has introduced a resolution to impeach him. I recommend you do the same. At least maybe turn this into a, ban Trump in Santa Barbara. We need to ban Trump because he's a pretty dangerous man. If we're going to ban this and that, he's much worse than a lot of terrorists, I think, and very dangerous. I want to talk about the Constitution here. I don't know, all of you are so busy defending it, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. But we've had a real problem in losing our freedom of speech. I remember being in front of the farmer's market, collecting the signatures and getting people to write letters, and they tried to get me out of there. And I said, "No, no, we have this right." And I'm grandfathered in anyway. I've been doing this for a while. Well, Mayor Helene Schneider, she was working on an initiative, and she could just walk amongst the crowd in there and inside the market. Oh, try doing that if you're not one of the power elites. Try doing that. And so I talked to the farmer's market manager about that, and I said, "Well, we have to be nice to her. She, after all, she's the mayor, and we have to be on her good side." Okay, we're losing our free speech. The regular, ordinary people, we don't have a lot of money, so our place of free speech is in front of grocery stores and, you know, I was told Michael Taubes doesn't want us in front of Trader Joe's out there, and Trader Joe's policy has to call, he wants them to call the police, and we're, it's very hard. We're losing our free speech unless you have money, and I, please, support free speech.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jack Yucifery.
Mayor Schneider, esteemed council, we know that sea level, sea levels are rising, and that is brought about by climate change, and that is putting our great, our city in great jeopardy. We know one of the primary causes of climate change is the burning of fossil fuels. We know that the fossil fuel industry is reliant upon large financial corporations for their capital-intensive projects. We also know that those large financial institutions are reliant in turn upon institutional clients, such as municipalities, for a large portion of their assets. So by patronizing such financial institutions who finance climate change-inducing activities, our city is actively sponsoring our own ruin. I know that sounds a bit hyperbolic, but unfortunately, the reasoning is sound and straightforward. I understand the city is currently invested with a $2 million note with Wells Fargo, a quarter million dollar note with Goldman Sachs, a lot of money with Tokyo Mitsubishi owned Union Bank. These institutions are known bad actors regarding climate change and a host of other issues. They have collectively paid out tens of billions of dollars over the last decade in settlements and fines. It is time we stop supporting them with our municipal finances. We as a city can do better, and there is an emerging consensus that you, as public fiduciaries, are in fact under an obligation to compel our city to do better. We in Santa Barbara are privileged to have great locally-owned banks in our community. Let's support them. There are responsible and reputable bond underwriters and asset managers who do not finance pipelines. Let's use them. Thank you, and thank you to the great organizers who are working so hard on this issue, and thank you in advance for resolving to stop supporting the fossil fuel industry with our city's money. Thanks.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Onto the consent calendar. There's some items to read.
Item number two, adoption of ordinance of successor agency transfer of property to the city and city acceptance of property, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting and assuming for public park and all related purposes, all right, title and interest to the government purpose, real property located in the city of Santa Barbara at 633 and 635 Bath Street, owned by the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara, and authorizing the city administrator to execute such agreements and related documents as necessary to effectuate such transfer of real property interest to the city of Santa Barbara. Item number three, renewal of levy for fiscal year 2018 for the wildfire, wildland fire suppression assessment district public hearing, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to continue vegetation road clearance, implementation of a defensible space inspection and assistance program, and implementation of a vegetation management program within the foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be more than general or ordinary benefit and describing the district to be assessed to pay the costs and expenses thereof, approving the engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering continuation of the wildland fire suppression assessment district for fiscal year 2017 through 2018.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Madam Mayor, I have to abstain on item three as I live in that area.
Okay. Mr. White.
I likewise.
Okay. So do we have a motion for item three?
A second.
Moved by Hart, second by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
That's, including Jason's, aye, and two abstentions from White and Hotchkiss. Okay. Anything else on the consent agenda? Or is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
A move.
Okay, moved by Rouse. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, except for item nine?
Except for, I thought nine was, was after consent. No? That's after the consent.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, never mind.
I got it. All right. So good. We have a motion by Mr. Rouse. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Hart. All in favor? Aye. Great. All right. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Hart.
Yes, just for the folks who actually left the room already, with this, Finance Committee is going to have an item on the future agenda for, about a socially responsible investment policy, so that will be coming up. But today, we talked about funding requests from outside agencies, proposed fees for the upcoming fiscal year for the Enterprise Fund, and then there were two informational items, examination of PERS costs and sales tax revenue by sector in the city.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight.
Santa Barbara Airport Economic Impact Study.
Okay. Great. All right, we have a full piece here, so. Mr. Rupert, I think we have a stack presentation first.
Right. Actually, Peter is going to be doing the presentation for us.
Well, there we go.
But I will be happy to introduce him to you.
There you go. Thank you, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Deanna Zacherson. I am the Airport Business Development Manager at Santa Barbara Airport, and with our Airport Director Hazel Johns, it's our pleasure today to introduce Dr. Peter Rupert, who is a professor of economics at the University of California, Santa Barbara. And he and his team have helped us with an economic impact study of the airport and helped us illuminate just how much the airport means for our community, so.
Great, thank you, and welcome, Mr. Rupert.
Thank you very much, Mayor Schneider and councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity. So I was asked as Director of the Economic Forecast Project to do a study for the airport. There was one done many years ago, and we really like to know sort of how much it brings to our environment in terms of employment, output, dollars, et cetera. I'm going to explain a little bit about what it means to do an impact study. What it means to do an impact study is that we try to determine all the expenditures that happen through the airport, and then not only through the airport, but also then all the extra things that happen. These are going to be, I'll get to it. And it just tries to give a general picture of how large this impact is, the people coming through, what they spend their money on, et cetera. So what we did, we got a lot of information from the airport itself, all of the, as many tenants as we could. And what we tried to do is figure out local job creation through the airport, their expenditures, the wages they pay, the benefits, et cetera. And the way it works is, obviously, the airport doing what it does, it has to go to Home Depot and buy some things, it has to get contractors, it pays people, it gets rent, et cetera. And what we're going to do then is take all of that, figure out how much the impact is, and then the taxes that come through the airport that they pay. So we also surveyed passengers. We want to know who is coming to us, who is leaving, and the types of people, whether they're professional or not, their education, their income levels, how long they stay, just getting a real sense of what the airport does. It's going to turn out that, as you'll see in a couple slides, that a lot of it is tourists who come through for at least four days, spending on hotels, restaurants, et cetera. So this type of study, and I'm not sure how many of you have seen it before, they're called these impact studies. And what they basically are, if you're aware of something called input-output tables, we know through the expenditure patterns that when a dollar goes into our community, we know where it goes. We know every dollar that gets spent, we know how many businesses it hits, how many suppliers it hits, et cetera. And the way they, the current state-of-the-art, and there's a couple of these programs out there, but they're all basically the same, and they break it down into three types of impact. The first impact is called the direct impact. That's the impact exactly of what the airport spends, how many people they hire, what they buy to run the airport, et cetera. The indirect impact is the following, that, as I mentioned, the airport may have to go and purchase some stuff from Home Depot or wherever. Therefore, Home Depot has to have more supplies and more people to do that. So that's called the indirect effect. And then the induced effect comes from labor. So labor that they hire at the airport, they then are going to rent property here in Santa Barbara, most likely. They're going to, they're going to go to our restaurants, they're going to go shopping, et cetera, and they're also going to spend money through the employment through the airport and their suppliers. So if we look just directly what the airport does, it pays for, supports about 1,440 jobs. So let me put that in perspective a little bit. If you think about, for example, some of our sectors that we have here, for example, the financial sector, that's a two-digit industry. The financial sector alone in Santa Barbara County is about 4,000 people, so that's how many the whole financial sector employs. So the Santa Barbara Airport is almost like its own little sector. It's smallish, but, you know, that's kind of the size. And it turns out that for every job that Santa Barbara Airport supports, that is, the people they hire, another half a job gets created in our community. And what that does is that turns into, the 1,440 jobs really turn into about 2,200 jobs that end up being supported in some way or another by the airport. So that turns out to be a multiplier of two, sorry, a half, and you're going to see in a second, we're going to have another multiplier for output. a second, we're going to have another multiplier for output. In terms of local spending, the airport and its tenants directly spend about $104 million in local spending. And again, this is a fairly large sector. Again, it's similar to some of the small sectors we have in the two-digit industry, and for every dollar that gets spent by the airport and its tenants, another dollar gets spent by suppliers and others. That leads to an impact of 205 million annually. And let me explain what these multipliers are. Everybody hears these words, multipliers. This multiplier is a number, it's two, and I can tell you that if you look through all these studies, the largest multipliers locally are somewhere between one and two. This is at the very high end. Places like the oil industry and all these other ones are multipliers, and apartment complexes about 1.3 to 1.4. So this is really generating a lot relative to most of the other types of industries we see, this 205 million. So this is what the impacts look like in terms of employment, and you can see the direct effect, as I mentioned, 1,440, that's exactly the people that they spend money on. Indirect effect are the extra employment that is by hotel, could be hotels, could be anything that, outside of just what the airport spends on, and then the induced effect is the labor part of it, again, for 20, almost 2,200 jobs. And the output, again, is a double multiplier that you see there, going from 103 million that the airport spends to 205. Where is it locally that we see it? The greatest benefit, as you can imagine, is in hospitality business, leisure, et cetera, casinos. Most people coming in here are coming in for, to vacation here in Santa Barbara, so that's the largest impact of 39 million. Real estate, transit, ground transportation, restaurants, et cetera. So this is sort of the idea that where this money is that we can see spent. And as I mentioned earlier, the majority of non-residents who are coming here stay for four days. About 21% of the people who are coming through the airport, who are non-residents, stay for four days or longer. And again, that's the impact that we see in the hotel, dining, shopping, et cetera. Taxes generated through the revenues of the airport, what they spend their money on, the money that comes into them, generate about 18.5 million for the federal taxes. State and locals, 12.2 million. So it's, you know, about a $31 million tax that comes through the airport. A few other things, just to highlight who's come through our airport. If you look at the, both residents and visitors, so the majority are 45 to 64, those are the majority of our, both residents and non-residents that are coming through the airport. Mostly very educated, graduate degree, bachelor's degree, and obviously, if those who have a little more education will also have a bit higher income. So you can see that the typical residents that are traveling through the airport are higher income, and the non-residents are also higher income, relatively speaking. About 50% are the higher ones. And the reason for travel? Well, residents, almost 62%, are traveling for business. On the other hand, leisure is about 35% of the non-residents are coming in for leisure, about 30% for families. Resident travel, you can see the bulk of travel is one to three trips per year, but there are a lot of people who are traveling a lot, you know, about 10% of the people travel more than 20 trips. Destinations, well, you can see sort of within California somewhat, but mostly, they're looking in the Western United States, Midwest, et cetera, East Coast, and international, so pretty much all over the place. And you can see that, as I mentioned earlier, again, that most of these visitors, when they come, about 50% are staying in hotels, motels, a little over 33% with family and friends, so that's generating a lot of income for our hospitality business. So it turns out that, as I mentioned, Santa Barbara Airport is certainly an economic engine here for us, bringing in almost as much as some of our two-sector industries, financial industries, et cetera, and, you know, continues to, you know, help us with development. So that's what I have, and open any questions or anything you might have?
Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips here. Any questions or comments? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, well, thank you, Dr. Rupert. I really appreciate this information, and wonder, is the report itself, does it have more granularity about where people benefit economically, geographically in the South Coast?
Nothing's named in terms of, you know, we know where they are in the county, not as much sort of very locally, we don't know.
Just generally, the zip code information about departing passengers?
We have zip codes for departing passengers.
Okay, so that is, and that's probably the most fine-grained in terms of geographic location.
Yes, yes.
Well, one thing occurs to me that it would be really helpful to have you seek out an opportunity to make a similar presentation to the Greta City Council. We share the physical space in the Greta Valley, and there is a lot of synergy that comes from the operation of the airport economically, as you point out in your report, and how that is distributed, you know, throughout the whole South Coast. I think it's a story that everybody needs to understand and be more aware of. So it'd be great if you could find an opportunity to make this presentation to the Greta City Council, and maybe even to the Carperia City Council, the County Board of Supervisors, so they understand the regional benefits and how significant the airport is to the economy of the local area.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hart. That's a great idea. I'll do it.
I was able to attend the Greta State of the City address last Friday, and they talk quite a bit, obviously, as they should, about the economic development there and the number of employers there, and I don't know how much research has been done, but I would imagine that just the presence of the Santa Barbara Airport where it is is certainly helping their economics in that city as well. So, yeah, that's good info to have.
Great idea. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
So this is from Ms. Johns rather than you, sir. Thank you very much for your report, but this seems to me great material for encouraging advertising at the airport. Am I wrong? Can this not be used?
Mayor Schneider and Councilman Hotchkiss, definitely, it's going to be used for marketing, and especially with our efforts with air service development. It was one of the items that was requested by the community, suggesting that it would be good data to have when we go and visit with the airlines. So yes, we will be doing that.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Rupert, I was wondering if any factors, I mean, the profile of the types of services we've had have changed from time to time over the years, in direct flight to Dallas, Denver service and whatnot. Is there anything in your model or your analysis that would suggest greater impacts in terms of our economic vitality if we had certain routes, like Sacramento, for example, or Denver or Dallas back as a regular route?
I think the answer to that is yes. There was an older study, as I mentioned earlier, and one of the things we noticed was that, you know, the decline in airline travel, you know, due to sort of, you know, the loss of some of these routes. And, you know, basically, I think compared to 2000, you know, ridership's down about 27%. So 27% is a big number, you know, for an airport to lose, and I think it mainly has to do with the loss of, you know, the routes that we saw.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Rupert, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate the partnership. Yeah, thank you. Okay. We don't need to vote on this, so we'll move on. We took item nine off, so item number 10.
Contract and authorization for offer to purchase properties located at 125 and 143 South Cali Caesar Chavez and 110 and 114 South Corianta Street.
Thank you. Mr. Hagmark?
Madam Mayor, council members, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, here today with an opportunity, an opportunity to acquire some property to help to plan for the future of water. This opportunity, although we had heard about it, kind of caught us by surprise at how quickly it finally started to move, and we wanted to get here and see if this was something we wanted to pursue. What we've been looking at this property, it's not often that we have property, particularly the size, come up for sale near and around the El Estero wastewater treatment plant, and what this site could do is help us to alleviate some of the overcrowding at El Estero by moving, actually, water fund assets, the recycled water storage tank off of this site and to another site, and also position the city if we ever wanted to pursue potable reuse in the future. So in 1989, back up a little bit, the recycled water treatment plant and infrastructure is all paid for by water fund ratepayers, and that facility was built initially in 1989 and took up a sizable footprint at El Estero. And, you know, there is a nexus to having them there, but as we continue to have other needs related to the wastewater treatment plant, it would be nice to have some more space. And one of the items that could be relocated is the recycled water storage tank, which I have a graphic I'll show a little later to show how, where it sits on the property. Right now, the leading option is where the recycled water tank is, is to put a third anaerobic digester. The anaerobic digester would allow us to increase our energy production for the facility. Right now, we're covering almost 80% of our electrical needs from methane, from our anaerobic digesters, and so this would allow us to increase that output. And it also has the added benefit of helping to enhance our biosalts down the road. Just a few months ago, actually in March, we were talking about potable reuse and the value that it brings to our long-term water supply planning, and I anticipate during our next long-term water supply update, potable reuse will certainly be debated and potentially added to that. It is an opportunity to diversify our water supply mix, and it is a local, sustainable water supply. At this point, based on the study that we did, we think that surface water augmentation showed the most promise as a new water supply. And in fact, in December, the State Water Resources Control Board concluded that DPR, Direct Potable Reuse Regulations, were feasible, and the state is currently working to develop regulations. We expect somewhere between five and seven years for them to develop those regulations. So to accommodate potable reuse, as part of the feasibility study, we dived into what would we need to make that step, and in order to convert our treated wastewater into drinking water, would require about two-and-a-half-acre parcel to accommodate the treatment equipment, tankage, and so we have roughly an idea about what kind of space. Certainly, there's probably things that we could stack and try and condense, but that, it gave us approximate size of what we're looking for. So here's the broader picture of water resources assets in the area. So this is the El Estero property. This is the recycled water treatment plant, and this is our storage tank. These two right here are digesters, and this is, so you can see how this would be an ideal location for the third digester. And it's not without cost, but this facility could, this one potential option, be relocated over here, the tank, but I think the big goal would be to put the, potentially the potable reuse facility over in this area. I'm going to take a zoom in really quick on the Chavez site, and we can talk a little bit about what's here. So it's actually made up of four parcels, and it does have some encumbrances on it. We have a wetlands area down in this bottom corner that has been identified, and it does have a setback to it, so it would encumber a portion of that property. We also have a requirement to have 20 parking space to accommodate Casa Esperanza, and the site also has been identified with significant contamination in the form of, I think there was lead and hydrocarbons on the site. The cleanup for those depend on how the site is used. Certainly, if it's a parking lot, a lot of that can be encapsulated, but if we're going to be digging down and putting in footings, much of that material would have to be removed. The current price that they're asking for is $5 million, and that is supposed to take into consideration dealing with some of the contamination. Also, what's been talked about is a bike path. I think there's a desire by the transportation group to put a bike path connecting Quarantina to Caesar Chavez. At this time, we don't believe it's a requirement of the property, but it was, I think, a desired location. Although this property may not be ideal, I do believe the property offers our best chance of addressing the needs of water resources going forward. Financing for the purchase of the property would come from water fund reserves. The timing of this purchase is not ideal, however, the opportunity to pick up the property of this size in close proximity to El Estero is just unheard of. There's really no comps for it. Recovery of reserves is anticipated to take, would be kind of spread out over a three-year period, and depending on the final purchase price, probably looking at a one-time increase in revenues of 3% to 4% for a period of three to four years to basically cover the cost of purchasing this property. So our recommendation today is that council authorize the Public Works Director to execute a contract with the Hayes Commercial Group for the purchase of this property and for the water fund, and make an offer to purchase the property for the water fund. Now, I have to say that unfortunately, we weren't able to get to the Water Commission and get their input on this property. We certainly have been talking a lot about potable reuse, and there's been great support from the Water Commission. I will be speaking to them on Thursday and hope to get their input, and potentially, that's input that you may be able to listen to and take into consideration when we, if we were to meet next week in closed session and talk about a potential purchase price.
Thank you. I just want to make a clarification. I know you're mentioning it's an opportunity to buy something, but we're being forced to sell it. It was RDA, Redevelopment Agency, pieces of property, and with the disillusionment, disillusionment, the, well, same thing, right? With the dissolving of the RDA, it's considered an asset, and that we have to sell it to the highest bidder, as I believe that process is, or there's some process involved. So I would much rather we just still have the property than we don't have to buy it from ourselves, but there it is. So just to be clear about what this property is. So questions first? I know we do have some public comment. Mr. Dominguez?
You could go to slide five, please. What is the property kind of in the middle of the horseshoe?
This is the Vercau Building. Is that what you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What is that?
It is a highly-used commercial area that has many tenants within that building footprint. I'd say it's probably one of the most valuable pieces of property in Santa Barbara.
Okay, so the part parallel to the yellow strip, that's where the parking lot is? I think there's Calvary Chapels back there.
That's correct.
There's a couple of high-tech.
Right here in the back.
Looks different from 30,000 feet. And then to the right of that?
In this area?
Yeah.
Yeah, as I understand it, it's, the building has internally been all sliced up, and so there's just office space and maybe internal storage. I don't know what else is in there. Yeah. As I understand it, it's a very profitable property.
And then what about the square to the further right? There's a long white.
This right here?
Keep going. Right there?
Right here?
Yep.
I think that's, again, more commercial property, tenants.
And to the right of that looks like field or undeveloped?
Right here? This property does, it's part of this development here. I think it was...
Part of the Parker Family Hotel. They purchased that property across the railroad tracks to provide parking for the hotel.
So the plot above the freeway is their parking, would be their parking potentially?
It's the railroad, not the freeway.
Railroad?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hagmark, how does the purchase process work? Is it a sealed bid? Do we have any kind of rights of first refusal, any of that kind of thing? How does this, how do you buy something from yourself like that? I've done it with my partners in my business a few times. It's never been profitable. I know that.
Mr. Casey?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we're not really buying from ourself. The property is owned by the Successor Agency, which is what followed from the Redevelopment Agency, and it's governed by the Oversight Board. So the Oversight Board, which is appointed by the different taxing entities of the area, is kind of the controlling governing body executing the sale of this property. And so you do not make the decision about who it's sold to. You really have no involvement whatsoever as the city council. It's really the Oversight Board that's conducting this sale. It's not really an auction. It's not really a bidding process. They've set a deadline of June 7th for submittals. Their legal counsel and staff to the Oversight Board will evaluate those submittals, and then will make a recommendation to the Oversight Board about how to proceed.
So there's not a negotiation per se? It's you submit your bid and hopefully the best?
It's a poorly-defined process that the state has laid out for disposing of property, and so unclear if they would come back and try to negotiate with a couple of parties to try to bid up the price more or just accept the... to try to bid up the price more or just accept the best proposal they have.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where would our funds come if we chose to buy this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, initially, they would come from Water Fund reserves, which we would ultimately have to recover. And that's where I'm, I am anticipating that in fiscal year nineteen, nineteen through probably twenty-two, we would have to raise rates like three to four percent in nineteen to basically cover the costs of the purchase of this property.
Because this is an enterprise thing. So the general, we're not threatening general funds here.
That's correct.
Thank you.
If we were to, well, the Water Fund wouldn't get some of the money back, but the General Fund would get some of the money back, right? Because we get thirteen percent of the proceeds of the sale. Is that correct?
Yes. So again, the purpose of the state forcing us to, forcing the successor agency to sell the property is so that the taxing entities can reap the benefit. The city of Santa Barbara is a taxing entity that will get thirteen percent of the sale proceeds. About half goes to the school district. Another chunk goes to the county flood control, city college, and that sort of stuff. General fund share is thirteen percent. We can talk about how we would want to use the proceeds if the Water Fund was a successful bidder about taking that general fund portion to return that to the Water Fund or something.
Okay. And what, so we can go to closed session if we want to put together a bid? If that, that's part of what you're asking us?
Yes, so thank you. So for purposes of the Brown Act, we are limited as to what we can talk about in closed sessions. So we want to have this open session discussion today about the need for the property, ask these questions in open session, and understand that. If you're interested to have us potentially submit a proposal, we will have a closed session next week to talk about price and terms. We're limited to price and terms. And so the suggested price is $5 million. I think, as Mr. Hagmark said, a lot of different constraints on the property, so it's hard to say if that's the right value. This process will determine what the right value is. Our suggestion today is that you allow us to hire Hayes Commercial to help us kind of evaluate what might be a good proposal if you so choose to proceed with that. But in closed session next week, we'll talk the details.
So just so we understand the process. So we would only be allowed to talk price and terms in closed session? Let's say we decide to do something that then goes into a bid, and if the successor agency wishes to entertain that proposal, either they just say yes, but then we have to approve it in open session?
Absolutely.
Right?
Yes.
If they want to negotiate with us a little more about the terms, we can do that in closed session, but the final outcome would have to be a vote in open session. Is that right?
All correct.
Okay. All right, just so everyone knows the process here. Okay, all right. So we do have some public comment. Why don't we get to that? We'll start with Ken Oplinger, to be followed by Jeff Matson.
Madam Mayor, we'd like to see the fishermen before me.
Okay, we can do that. Is Mr. Matson a fisherman? Then there you go, okay. And then Kim Selko will be after, will be after you. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Matson. I'm a commercial fisherman. Raised my family here, homeowner. My, my, one of my children, my kids is a business owner. Many commercial fishermen are grounded and based in the community for long periods of time. I come here to, to talk about the property, the Cesar Chavez property. And after all that information I just heard, I'm a bit confused. But I would, I think I walked in here to ask and let you know that there is another higher possible use for the property. And that is for our maritime community. In our maritime community, I believe that when people come through the airport, there's multipliers when they go to the harbor and they spend money. There's over two million people a year go to the harbor. And obviously, there's probably two, over $200 million a year that are put into the community through businesses, fish, entertainment, recreation down there. So if the property winds up being tanks, that, that kind of befuddles me. In your coastal, in your coastal zone, you would put water tanks to recycle, reclaim water. So I just, I'm a little bit at odds at the logic in that. But I would like to tell you and emphatically explain how important that last little nugget piece of property is to the maritime ocean-going community. Commercial, sport, recreation, service, and support is being displaced in the funk zone like you wouldn't believe. Having to drive to Oxnard or Ventura for gaskets. We're losing our welders. We're losing our small mechanics. We're losing our infrastructure to store, support, and maintain equipment, not only for commercial, but for sport as well. And I would like to add that the harbor department has done a fabulous job in supporting the commercial fishing and, and doing their job of supporting generally the ocean maritime-going community.
Thank you.
And, is it?
No, two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I know there are other, Mr. Hotchkiss, do you have a question for him?
I do.
Come on back, Mr..
Can I, can I ask you a question, please?
Thank you.
How do you foresee fishermen that sort of would actually use that property? Can you be specific?
Yeah, well, you know, there's a myriad of ideas that, that have been floated, but it's, it could be an all-encompassing community for storage, for support, for maintenance, for celebrating our historical connection to the ocean. Some years ago, I spoke with Roberta Cordero. She had expressed an interest in putting a tow mole there in the front. We have some old Monterey-type sport, commercial fishing boats that would be very attractive in that coastal area, near the Five Star Hotel and close to the water, for tourists and people to come and enjoy and appreciate and see that connection that we have historically to our ocean.
Could you make do with a portion of the property?
Probably, yes.
Do you know what portion that would be?
I think what, this kind of segues into another statement I would like to make, and that we need some help from, from staff, excuse me, to, to analyze our infrastructure needs with regard to that. In the past, we have, California Sea Grant has done an infrastructure needs assessment. This goes back to 2007. And it identifies needs for storage and space. And then also, there's another document that was produced through the Chamber of Commerce analyzing the actual economic input of commercial fishing to our community. But yeah, there's, there's a myriad of ways that it can be used and utilized in showcasing our maritime heritage to the community. That's part of my vision. I'd like you guys to share that vision with us instead of putting water tanks on the property.
I understand. Well, obviously, the whole fishing community is important, which our job is to try to balance and get the best use. And it may include you or it may not, but we'll see. But thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim Selko, be followed by John Colgate, and then Ken Oplinger. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember. I appreciate the time today and also your positive responses to my recent request for your time. I'm a professor at UCSB in the Bren School. I've been at UCSB as a marine scientist for fifteen years. I'm a resident here for almost twenty. And I'm also the Director of Fish SB, a program of the Chamber of Commerce, and also the volunteer and very passionate executive director of the Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit here. And we together are working to bring to your attention this need for really revisiting and looking hard at our maritime infrastructure near the waterfront. We at Santa Barbara, at UCSB, talk about the blue economy. This is a huge movement going on worldwide and especially domestically to invest in coastal economies. These are the solutions to green energy and to food security, local seafood production, and wave energy and alternative fuels through algae. This is all going on in innovation and entrepreneurship at UCSB. And that makes Santa Barbara a no-brainer nexus for supporting the future of our coastal economy here and growing it. It intersects the visitor population. It intersects with commerce, fishing history. And we have a plan for using a site like this, a portion of it, maybe an acre, to develop this, and we're working hard to fund that. Our plan can be looked at at cfsb.info online. And you may be aware that the Ventura Harbor Commission is working actively to do the same. They are increasing their port infrastructure, and they are attracting our fishermen and shellfish farmers down to Ventura as we speak. And we need to keep up with the times and make some hard choices about how we use this very precious resource of land in the coastal zone. This area is almost entirely zoned ocean-dependent use that we're looking at here, and yet very little of it is still ocean-dependent use. So I hope that you will consider that when you think about purchasing the property and think about the funding you get or use to purchase the property so that we can preserve this opportunity to leave some ocean-dependent use on this property. Thank you.
Thank you. A question. So I'm hearing from both you and previous speaker that you don't necessarily need the entire property, maybe about an acre of it. Do, do you have a potential buyer who, with the deadline to be able to present a bid? Or are you looking for partnerships? Or, because it's not up to us that this deadline's happening, right? So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so we are exploring all options. We'd like to partner with whoever buys it. And we hope that the city will then, whoever develops it, make sure that that ocean-dependent use is factored into the development. There's a little sliver of it right now that is zoned for ocean-dependent use on the property itself, and we hope that will stay. We think that the timeline for sale is too fast, and we'd like the city to take the time to look into ways of putting together a bid that will be successful, that will be funded in a way that will allow us to use this use flexibly and maximize future economic opportunity with it. We're also looking for partners in the community and donors and investors as well. And I've got lots of meetings to do that.
Mr. Dominguez also has a question for you.
I wanted to ask about the blue economy. And is there a, a impact hub or incubator in the city at this point?
There is none at all, and we badly need that. And we have a plan to develop that on this site of small workshop spaces for surfboard shapers, sailmakers, folks distilling oil out of algae. And this would be done in a way that the public could view and walk and mingle and learn about this entrepreneurship, learn about sustainable business ventures, and being water-wise, our local channel. And it's a, it could be a huge resource, a huge tourist draw, a big way to draw more visitors to Santa Barbara.
I think you're absolutely right. I think it would improve our environment and our economy. And it's pretty rare where we have a big opportunity like this, and it leverages our brand name of Santa Barbara as an environmentally friendly city.
Right. I mean, this could be the Pike's Place of Santa Barbara, the Fisherman's Wharf, if we could do it better and more uniquely. And it's a perfect spot for it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Colgate, Ken Oplinger, Hillary Hauser, and then Mike Jordan. Welcome.
Mayor Snardier, the Councilman, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. My name's John Colgate. I'm the Vice President of the Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara, with a primary fisheries organization that has been representing the Fishermen of Santa Barbara for the last forty years. I'm here to talk to you about the, the bid on, on the Cesar Chavez property. I'd like to encourage the council to authorize the city to bid on it. And I'd also like to encourage the council to, to work with the Commercial Fishermen of Santa Barbara to see how our needs for ocean-related space could work with this project. I want to tell the council that right now, there's a significant need for ocean-related space in, in the waterfront area. Right now, the commercial fishermen are going all the way to Lompoc and Oxnard to, to store their gear. We have one storage facility on Garden Street on the right property. CFSB has operated that property for the last twenty-seven years. It's a half an acre, and it's six boats and like twenty storage containers. Right now, that's on a month-to-month lease, and we could lose that at any time. I'm currently fishing groundfish right now, and, and I have to bait ten thousand hooks for a four-mile-long, long line. And of the fifteen fishermen that are fishing long line, six of them have to get their, all this gear baited in Galita. Six of them actually have to go down to Newport Beach to get all this gear baited. I fortunately have a, and two of my fisherman friends have a spot in the funk zone where we're doing our baiting. But again, that's a month-to-month lease that is, could, could very well go very quickly. We've lost a lot of our ocean-related area to the water treatment plant that you guys have seen, a significant amount of our, our ocean-related area. And the funk zone is, is totally taken over.
You need to wait.
So we'd really encourage you guys to, to look at the possibilities of working with us. And, you know, just an acre for a boat storage area would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Ken Oplinger?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Ken Oplinger. And my apologies for the breach of decorum.
No worries.
It was important for you to hear from the fishermen first. You know, I want to start just by thanking Mr. Hagmark for bringing this up. There really hadn't been an opportunity, I think, for the, the commercial fishing community to come before you and talk about its desires for this, for this land just because of this very odd way that the mayor outlined that the city is having to divest it. You know, certainly, prior to the whole RDA divestment process, there was a desire by these folks to be able to acquire this property. That's all gone away. They're not ready to make a bid at this point. They don't have the funds to do that. But this might be a unique opportunity to be able to work with the water department to make that happen. I think the other potential possibility, if we have the time to do it, is to explore the option of the waterfront folks also participating with the water department to see if maybe you could then not have to go and do such an increase on water bills to be able to acquire the property, since a portion of this would be for the water-dependent use that the fishermen are, are talking about. About an acre or so would be great. It doesn't allow for all the things that Mr. Hagmark outlined, but I think it would certainly allow for some of the, the potable reuse stuff that was discussed and would still provide an acre to be able to do the, the, the work on-site that CFSB wants to do. You know, if you go back to the economic impact study that Dr. Rupert did just prior to the spill on the commercial fishing industry, this is a major economic driver in our community. These folks have been sort of under the radar for many of us for a long time. And I think this is an opportunity for us to ensure that we can sustain that, that economic engine here, provide them with the things that they need to be able to sustain themselves, and ensure that we've got a healthy environment for them and for a lot of the, the offshore uses that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hillary Hauser from Hill the Ocean, and Congresspeople, City Council. I didn't know that Hill the Ocean would be tugging with the fishermen, my friend, over a piece of property.
You didn't mean to wear that shirt today, did you? I mean, you have the fishermen, never mind, I'm just giving you hard time.
Yeah, they're all dead. But this staff report, this situation, just takes us over the moon. We are really, this is the moment we've been waiting for. We've been working on recycled water, tugging and going back and forth to the city and trying to help and get the money to increase recycled water. This area is the area where D cell is happening, where the wastewater is, and so forth. And so with Public Works and the Water Resources, we've talked for years about increasing the recycled water that we're doing. But Santa Barbara doesn't have the storage. Santa Barbara doesn't have the ability to take the water and put it into a groundwater situation like Galita can. So the, and in our, my, our conversations with Mr. Hagmark and Rebecca Bjork, the city really had to wait for DPR. So we joined with the city to encourage the state board to get a move on, on the DPR standards. They've been lagging. And this is the wave of the future. So the, the plan would be to make, to take this water, have it DPR, mix it with Kachuma in Laurel Reservoir, and have it all treated in Decatur. This, we're, we've got a breather from the drought right now, sort of. But Santa Barbara was, was really hard-hit, and that, that situation is still there. I, Hill the Ocean really supports this buying of the property for the, for the DPR plant. We commend the, the Public Works for looking forward to this because we're going to, we're going to need it. And I really support this motion that, and the deadline is right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmen, Councilmembers, I hustled down to cheerlead, and I'm a little tempered now because everything you heard from the fishing community is absolutely true. As you know, everything east of State Street underneath the freeway is being threatened, not just ocean-related. not just ocean-related uses, but also any type of industrial, commercial. This morning on Planning Commission's site visit, we visited a new hotel site on Indio Muerto, right there at the on-ramp to the freeway, which is a displacement of entirely commercial and industrial uses for a new hotel. So it's a little threatening. If you've been following Water Commission, you know that two things have been a constant theme over the last year, and one is that we find more land for both our current uses and emerging technologies, and the other is we reduce our outflows of treated water into the ocean. This purchase will resolve or help resolve both of those. Pre-drought numbers were 12 million gallons a day being treated at Cater and 6 million gallons going out into the bay and being wasted. When we get to direct potable reuse, however long that is, if this is a one-year investment, a five-year investment, a 10-year investment, to have that property available to be ready for that, that will put us in better control for our sources of water and ready for the future. I agree with everything that was in Heal the Ocean's letter to you today, except for the end part of that, because I don't necessarily see this as a plan for the future to reduce the reliance on D-SAL. I want to be in control of my source water. I'd like a healthy D-SAL source while also throwing away none of that original source into the bay, and then I'd like to go look for more water to use also. So I would look, I would hope that you would move forward on this. I also think, I didn't get here in time for Josh's presentation, but I think, and I didn't hear the DPR part of it, but to me, these are all moving pieces of parcels up there. Eventually, I think you should be talking about the city corporate yard and whether that's the best location for the city corporate yard, adjacent to our existing treatment and D-SAL plant, and whether or not those uses can be swapped with this new property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the public comments to the council. Just a quick question, I guess, to clarify. Mr. Hagmark, the property, there's 2.4 acres for what you're looking at. Do you need 2.4 acres? Or is there, and I guess the follow-up would be, is there a simpatico-type of arrangement that we're hearing from the fishermen group that could work, maybe?
Well, there's several answers to that, Madam Mayor. The challenge is there's a lot of encumbrances on that 2.4 acres, and I think that's part of the research that we'll be kind of doing, which is, we have the sensitive habitat area, it's going to take a chunk of that. We have 20 parking spaces that we're obligated to provide Casa Esperanza, and that takes another chunk of that, 2.4 acres. Then there's a bike path that potentially, I think it's going to come down to the council decision, do we connect a bike path through there and take another, you know, 20-foot swath through there, and then what's left? And so there's a, there is a lot of questions about what is the usable space left of this property. When we did our feasibility study for potable reuse, we identified a need for about 2 and 1/2 acres. It took up the corporation yard annex. We just, at the time, we just used that as, you know, how much space would we need? We pretty much fully built out that site to accommodate all the treatment and tankage. So we kind of have an idea of what we would need. Now, is there an opportunity for, to, for, be a short-term? Because I anticipate, you know, the timing and financing of all this infrastructure would take several years to pull together, along with the regulations. There may be an opportunity to accommodate some temporary use, but I hesitate that there would, after you take out all those pieces, whether there would be enough to share.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Well, I think that is a cautionary note, but the thing that everybody agrees on is we need to buy this property. So then the second question is, what do we do with it? And so to me, the answer is simple, that we should go ahead and make a bid and try and get this property under the city's control, and then we'll have to have a planning process and work all of these things at the same time. There are other assets that can be used in other ways, and there's a potential to shift uses around over time. I don't think this is going to be an immediate answer to the things that the fishing community has brought to the table, but the challenge is trying to integrate these things all into the assets that the city has and the community might have as well. But to me, if we don't move forward expeditiously and aggressively to get control of this property, none of those other opportunities present themselves at all. So to me, this is a pretty simple decision.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hagmark, does, if this property did not work out for us, does that preclude our ability to go forth with potable reuse in the future?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, it would significantly impede our ability to do that.
So there's no, I mean, there's no other options unless we repurpose the corporate yard or something along those lines?
Yeah, and then you have to relocate those operations, yes.
All right. If we use water funds to buy this property, can we then use it for something like the thing the fishermen are talking about? In other words, if we use enterprise funds to buy the property, are we allowed then to lease it or to put it out to some other use besides water use?
Councilmember Rouse, I'm channeling what I believe Sarah Connect would be telling me on this, is that if we're purchasing this with water rate funds, it can only be used for that. There is an opportunity for us to lease it at a fair market value if we're not currently in need of it, but I don't think it's a thing that we could just rent for a dollar a year like you can with some general fund properties. And so I think there would be some challenges to that. Now, there would be an opportunity, the general fund could buy a portion of the property from the water fund down the road if that were the case, but I don't, I think, given the requirements of Prop 218, we're really limited on what we can do.
And then lastly, I know this is why you're talking about hiring Hayes, but with the encumbrances, with the, not only the parking spaces, the potential bike path, and then the soil remediation, I mean, it really makes you wonder how you determine what the final value is and how we make a bid on that. I mean, I suppose that's what Hayes will be able to tell you to some degree with certainty, or...
And we're, yes, and we're looking forward to that discussion. We're fortunate or unfortunate to have a lot of experience with contaminated soil cleanup in the area, so we do have some real numbers for dealing with it. And, but I think, you know, when we talk about what goes on there, certainly if you're talking about a parking lot, the cleanup and uses seem pretty affordable, and therefore the property in theory would have more value, but if we're talking about having to do some major excavation, we're going to need to deal with those soils and/or at some point, potentially this property is going to require a lien on it related to leaving the contaminated soils in place as well. I mean, those are, those are all the challenges that we'll be struggling with to put a value to it. I've joked that I think it's worth a dollar, given all the contamination, but fair enough, I think there's something in between that and what they're asking, yes.
Well, I'm excited to hear the fishing industry's interested, only because if this doesn't work out, that idea going forward, I think, to help preserve and maintain what we have is a very viable and very valuable industry is important, so at least maybe get the wheels turning in other directions if this particular project doesn't work out. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
Can you go to the next slide, I think, that has the zoom-in? So if I understand correctly, given the shape of the property and the encumbrances, it doesn't seem realistic to expect we could have a city facility and the ocean-going use that was talked about today?
Yeah.
At least not to any significant degree. They might get a quarter acre, half acre.
I think that's accurate.
So I just want to make sure that the council's not moving forward thinking that we could pull off what seems like would be a great win-win, but it just doesn't seem like there's enough land there. Because if that's the case, if it's an either-or, I'm going to approach this as just the water use. So what I want to do is go back in time and find out, how much water is it that we would be able to make using the DPR?
And we've come up with some numbers. That was presented in that March 7 report where we generated. On the high end, which I think is, you know, it was somewhere around 7,000 acre-feet a year. I think in practicalities, it's going to be somewhere around 5,000 acre-feet a year, which would be half of the city's demands.
And what would that do to our use of the D-SAL plant? How do those two projects work together?
I think that's going to be something we'd have to tackle as part of a long-term water supply plan to see how they would exist together. I don't have the answers to that right now.
Because there's three scenarios in my mind. Either we're using this to supplement the D-SAL, so we have both running, or we plan on decommissioning the D-SAL for whatever reason, environmental or cost, or we have this as a backup. So which do you think is the most likely? Which is the optimal system? I know we talk about it in terms of diversification of water sources, but I think there's a limit on the price we should ask our fee payers to bear.
The challenge is, I think, where particularly related to DPR is it's likely 10 years out that we're talking about this facility coming online. At that time, we will know more about what kind of losses we're looking at from Kachuma. Right now, you know, it could be upwards of more than 40% of our water that we get from Kachuma lost, and so we may be looking at an option where we're actually talking about both.
So in that case, you're, that would be kind of a worst-case, kind of a crisis decision, in which case if that's the situation we're in, six or seven, eight years from now, we can purchase land to create this type of plant. Then we're going to know more about the technology involved, what our actual needs are. It seems like we're buying this land just in case, and it's a pretty big chunk of money. There's other land down there that we could probably buy. It might cost us a little more, but again, there's, you have to discount the extra we might have to pay to buy it in six or seven years by the chance that we're going to need it. So if there's only a 30% chance we're going to lose a significant amount of Kachuma and our groundwater, whatever combination would require us to use this, that's the amount you would have to discount paying a premium for another plot of land, either buying someone else out in another area, condemning a land. So to me, I don't see the reason why we've pushed down this path to buy this. I think there's certainly a price. I think what Mr. Hart said, there's, if there's a need for it and we can get it at the right price, that would make sense, but I'm not hearing that from the department or from other council members.
You know, I think that the policy that we've been moving forward with under, in the water supply planning, has been diversification, continuing to diversify. So I can envision a time when we have both, both D-SAL and potable reuse, and we reckon...
I can absolutely envision it too, but I want to see something that tells me more of a certainty that we're going to need it, not, we're going to spend $5 million because we might need it.
Well, as I mentioned, if we don't choose to use it for potable reuse for whatever reason, fair enough, I think there's a desire to move some recycled water equipment off of El Estero, because there's a desire to utilize, better utilize, the space at El Estero to increase our treatment of wastewater there. And so if that's the case, we'd be looking at moving a several million gallon recycled water tank to this area to help bolster what, right now, is minimal storage that we have for the recycle water system. So there are needs that could be served by moving water assets off of the wastewater treatment plant.
And what would you quantify the worth of that need? Is that a $250,000 need? Is that a $500,000 need?
I mean, we're talking about potentially getting to a point where El Estero is producing 100% of its energy needs, so it's a basically completely neutral energy user.
And you're talking about the third anaerobic digester?
Mm-hmm.
So how much money would that save us in energy? What is that, what would a third digester produce in kilowatts or value?
I do not know that offhand. I certainly, we could look into that.
Ms. Bjork?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. There are actually several drivers for the third digester at El Estero. We have two digesters right now, both of which are pretty critical to the functionality of the plant. We do have to take one out of service every three or four years to clean it and get all the rocks and things out of it. And when we do that, we're extremely vulnerable with only having one other digester. Additionally, we would be able to generate additional gas and probably produce more than 100% of the energy that's needed at El Estero. The annual budget for electricity at El Estero is about $600,000, so if we're at 80% of that, we're probably looking at a cup, you know, $200,000 of value in the energy that we'd be producing, but the drivers really are more around operations for the need for the digester at that plant. And you had heard Ms. Arroyo talk to you a little while ago about the biosolids planning that we're doing down there. That's that project. So it's a real project that's moving forward in the next couple of years. If you, can you go back to the slide of El Estero? El Estero is extremely constrained, and what you can see there in that plant, in addition to what you can see built, is underneath the ground are all the subsurface pipelines and power lines and gas lines that make the very few remaining open spaces pretty encumbered and hard to work on. So really, as much as anything, it's the constrained space of the wastewater plant and planning for the future. We know we're not going to have fewer regulations or less treatment in the future, but we have nowhere to cite those things at this point in time. The question about why now, honestly, the only real reason for why now is because the property is available. If we could wait, we'd rather wait.
And what is taking place at the corporation yard annex? Would that be something you could use for either the biosolids or the recycle tank?
We could not use it for the biosolids very effectively. We could potentially move the recycle tank over there. That is a very heavily-used area by the, a number, all of the city departments, really, parks and recreation, fire, police, water, streets, all use it as, for some of the same things you heard the fishermen talking about, need for storing materials and basically staging. I think, you know, if we had resources to intensify the use of some of our other properties by building two-story offices, we could potentially relocate that site somewhere else, for instance, maybe Garden Street, but we would need millions of dollars to consolidate the existing resources that are going on there in order to be able to move the corporation yard onto a developed site. And so, I mean, there are some options in the future, but they really are very resource-dependent.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, I thought Mr. Hart did a good job of framing the land purchase. I support the staff recommendation that we commence or continue the process of attempting to purchase this. This is an extremely crowded area for a range of services that we've heard about, the various water and wastewater pieces. There's also, and the corporation yard is up there, and if we go back to when the D-SAL plant was actually considered, I mean, that was, that was a time when there was quite a bit of open space down here and empty land, and it's gone. And so we, this is, we're being cornered here, and we're a little bit like, we're more economic than the fishermen. The fishermen had, used to really control the land from State Street eastward, south of the freeway. There was just, there were a whole host of fishing activities. There, I think there were three cleaning plants on State Street, two on State Street, one over on Santa Barbara, but, and fishermen owned it. And what happened to it? It got commercialized into non-fishermen activities. And so, and even the Wright family was involved in commercial fishing back in the day. Some of that consolidation of ownership there came out of the commercial fishing industry of 50 and 60 years ago. So that's a real loss, and I like the ideas that are being presented on this sort of short-term basis. I think as things unfold, that there should be an opportunity for that, if it's a license for some years to be able to use it while the potable reuse activities continue forward, that would be a neat shorter-term use. It would be great to find a longer-term home for that very activity. The blue economy activities would be great, too. But I'd like to make a motion, if I may, to that the city move forward with the staff recommendation on the land purchase.
Moved by White, second by Hart. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it possible to redesign some of the needs that we have and go two-stories and therefore be more compact if, in fact, we tried to accommodate some of these other uses?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, if you're asking about going two-story on the water treatment facilities?
Yeah.
It's fairly limited in, you know, one of the real constraints is water's so heavy that...
I'm talking about the tanks that we were talking about?
The tanks, we would be more likely to go subsurface, but there's not like, not much, be extremely expensive.
Yeah, plus you've got a water table problem there.
You've got water table, I mean, you've got all kinds of constraints that would get, you've got the contaminated soils, you've got the water table, and then you really don't want things on top of tanks, because you need to be able to access them. So for instance, at Sheffield and at Cater, where we have the tanks that are subsurface, we have to still keep that surface area completely clear, so it doesn't really get us any space.
Solve us any problem, okay.
Right.
Well... Well, to Mr. Dominguez's questions, we're not losing an asset here. It's not throwing money away. We've got an asset that's going to only appreciate if down the line we choose to do something else with it, then we can, but it's going to be worth more than it is now. So I agree with Mr. Hart's assessment and Mr. White's motion, and we'll support it.
So, you know, it's, it's property, there's multiple opportunities, it seems like, that could be used. Maybe we don't have the exact answer today, but the, the timing is such that we have to make a decision to move forward or we give it up. And so at the very least, I think we should have that closed session to figure out terms and price. I gathered from Mr. White's comments that, and let me see if part of your intent of your motion is perhaps to talk to the Fisherman Group about what potentially could happen or not, and at least, I'm going to, I'm going to ask those questions anyway. I'd like to know what, if there's a long-term or a short-term opportunity there, just so we have that information. So if part of your preparation for that session, when we make that determination, can include just some analysis and maybe talking with Ms. Selko or whomever. I don't want to make any promises, though. It, it sounds like at the, the most optimal thing may be a short-term scenario, which I don't want to put us down the line when then we become the bad guys and we get to kick people out of something that people like to see because we need something for a very important purpose, which is potable reuse. So I, I'm a little cautious about that, but I think at least the conversation and having that information would be helpful. So really, today's motion is really just continuing the process forward, and we might get outbid by some random person elsewhere from who knows where. I mean, we don't know. So that's, that's still an unknown at this point. So I think we should have that conversation. So I'll be supporting the motion. Ms. Mario, did you have anything?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion as well, even though I missed part of the hearing. I have had a conversation with Dr. Selko and got some information from the speakers that were here and did read Ms. Hauser's letter. Thank you so much. And so I just wanted to let you know I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that it's, I think it's important to remember too, that the decision initially to purchase this property by the redevelopment agency was a smart one ahead of time, and it showed a lot of foresight because if we had not purchased this property, this would not be vacant land. And that is the truth. If you, as Councilmember White described, if you look out at that map, there are very, very, very few opportunities to cite any of the things that we're talking about. And so hopefully, we will be successful in this bid environment and be able to continue to control this property, to have it go for critical public infrastructure that we will need in the future. And had we not made the decision back then, we wouldn't have this opportunity now. So, but I do think it is important to add to what the mayor said about the vision that the fishermen had brought forward and the complexity of that vision, and it would be great if we had a large site to do all of those things on, in one place. I don't know that that is necessary to implement the vision that you're talking about. I think that that could be, the things you spoke about could be deconstructed and located in different places. The synergy isn't completely necessary to be in one site. I mean, there, and there is going to be change in the community as we go forward. Downtown is changing dramatically, and some of the things that you're talking about, about green businesses being located in a, in a non-industrial kind of facility that is doing more thinking work and computer work and research, doesn't necessarily have to be in the same place that you're storing boats. And so I think that we have to have really open mind about the way we're going to solve these problems and move pieces around on the puzzle. But the fact that you're here and telling us about the need to think about that is really helpful to this conversation. So thank you for being here for that.
Mr. Dominguez?
So do we know how much it would cost to do the soil cleanup?
We, they have a number in the cost estimate that was provided on the property. Somewhere around $2.5 million is what they put in there as a deduct off of the value. I think they said the value of the property was about $10 million, and then they've deducted the property requires, the parking, the wetlands, and the contamination soil to get to this $5 million number. We haven't had, we haven't looked yet at what it would take us to clean up the contaminated soil. It may be more expensive for us to do it certainly than maybe a private entity, but we're going to take a look at that, and that'll be part of the discussion for next week.
And does that number make sense, given our experience with the D-SAL?
Seems low, but again, it depends on how intensive, how much excavation we have to do, and so we're going to look at that.
So we, it's possible we buy a, let's say, $4 million price, if we can get it below the listed price, we may have to put three or four million in to clean it up?
That's, that could be true, yes.
Okay. So, and I appreciate what Mr. Hotchkiss says, that adds a new light to it, that we could buy it, and it's like most Santa Barbara property, it's probably going to go up in value. My problem with it is we're going to ask the rate payers to pay for it in the meantime because it sounds like you said there's going to be three years of a heightened water rate?
That's one approach.
And what would be the, the increase?
I was estimating somewhere between 3% and 4% is what we would need to re-recover. Right, an additional 3% to 4% above what, what else we might need to do to offset the cost of this properties.
And regarding the timing, if we were to try to push through a licensing agreement for some of the waterfront-related activities, we would probably have to clean up the soil first and then get building permits for, it sounds like there are needed kind of warehouse-type space?
It really depends. I mean, right now, it's, it's an open dirt lot, and if they can work with an open dirt lot, I don't, I don't know what kind of cleanup we'd have to do at this point. I mean, those are all really good questions that we'd have to investigate, but certainly if the waterfront's to buy it and we were to temporarily lease it out, they'd have to pay market value for that property at this point.
Okay. So I'm, I'm inclined to go along with this motion, but I just want to make sure when we go into closed session, we have as much detailed information we can possibly have in the short time about how much it might cost to clean up the land and make sure we wouldn't end up with an asset that's worth less because of, if we don't know what the exact contaminants are, I know if it's, if it's lead, it's one thing, if there are other contaminants, it's another. So I don't know if we can get that. Do we actually have that, what the contaminants are?
Yeah, we do have a soil contamination plan, but again, again, they, they put a few holes on the property and made some general assessment of it, and as you know, we start digging and you find, find something else. So that's always the risk.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hart, did you have something else?
Yeah, just the last thing. I just do want to make sure that the public understands that the staff's proposal for how we would pay for this through water funds over a three-year period with that percentage increase is just one way to do this. There are many variables in this conversation, the purchase price, the terms, the length of time that we would amortize that cost. Those are all to be determined in the future, that we are not committing to do this. All we're basically doing is taking this item from here and moving it into a closed-session negotiation, you know, to, to just begin to address some of those issues. But I don't want it misunderstood that this is a commitment of that and that, at that price for water customers.
Just to follow through, and if we get a successful outcome of this, we would have to come back to open session where those questions would have to be addressed in open session anyway. So, okay, so we all know what the motion is? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Thank you. Thank you very much. So a little agenda working here. We have a four o'clock for interviews, so I would suggest, since I see Mr. Serrano here and Ms. Foreman, that we can take item 12 at this point, and, and then after that, we'll go back to city advisory group interviews. So if you could read item 12?
Presentation from South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety.
So I caught you off-guard there, and, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Salud Serrano. I've been here a number of times presenting, and I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on work of the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety in the last year. And just as a reminder to those watching at home and, or tuning in and also in the audience, the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety was established as a regional coordination. We don't provide services, we provide coordination services to the region, and it includes the city of Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, Galida, and the county of Santa Barbara, and it's administered by the Community Action Commission. The mission of the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety is to improve and support the safety and quality of life for youth, their families, and the community. Before I go on, I also want to acknowledge those that are here with, with me, Fran Foreman, Executive Director of Community Action Commission, and I believe Mark was here, Mark Alvarado from City Parks and Recreation, who is also part of the strategy team of the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety. March 14th was, 2007 was the 10-year anniversary of the Saks Fifth Avenue where Luis Angel Linares was fatally stabbed, and also followed by two other homicides involving youth, both, both, you know, victims and responsible parties. And that led to a lot of work directed by, by this council and by the city to convene the community and establish a regional effort in those 10 years. And so that's, you know, this past March 14th marked the 10-year anniversary of when a lot of this work was started, even though there was past efforts before, you know, many efforts in the city previous to that, this specific effort started then. Some numbers that, you know, from the start, we've been looking at county probation data, juvenile probation data for numbers, and when we started in 2009, there was 245 youth involved in the system. And direction back then really was increase coordination, provide services to youth, and break down silos, you know, and decrease the number of youth involved. And I'm glad to report that in 2016, there was 49 youth in the South Coast, marking an 80% decrease from the start of the effort. And I do want to acknowledge that. That doesn't mean we're done, and that doesn't mean that this number can't rise up in the future. So we remain vigilant to make sure that when there's upticks, we monitor that and we, we provide the appropriate strategies through the strategy team, which meets on a monthly basis. Also, from the benefits of coordination, up until now, we've received $3.5 million in state funding for various CalGrips in the South Coast, and also including Lompoc in that. By the end of this year, we will be up to, close to $4 million. And these, these funds have to be matched dollar per dollar. So really, in the area, we've, you know, have, have used up about $8 million and provided a whole spectrum of services, which includes 510 youth have received during that time, from 2009 to 2016 have reserved intervention program services, 3,200 have received in-school prevention, and 3,726 overall. What then, the number in there, it's not in there, parents have also been served in the process, which hasn't been youth and youth programs, but also youth, I mean, also parents being served in the process. Specifically for the city of Santa Barbara in 2016, through the CalGrip, there is a current CalGrip grant that is being administered through the city of Santa Barbara, received from the Board of Standing and Community Corrections. And in 2016, that served 61 youth with case management. 20 males received a Hobenoblich as a culturally appropriate curriculum, evidence-based, and 17 females received the Shinashli educational curriculum on top of the 61 youth receiving, or part, those composed, the 61 youth also receiving case management services, which is wraparound services, comprehensive referrals, education plans, assessment, intake assessment. Out of those, 30 of youth of the 61 participated in the city of Santa Barbara Youth Employment Program, which CalGrip helps to offset the cost of, of unemployment for the 30 youth. 24 participated in the project towards no drug abuse, and 10 parents received support through a parent group in 2016. As a reminder, after five years and we saw the number in decrease, the strategy team felt that it was important to refocus and find, you know, the strategies that were critical to moving forward in the region, our, our work going forward. And so in 2015, the strategy team worked with previous Assistant City Manager Marcelo Lopez to conduct interviews of the community and stakeholders, and from that, we gathered information that we should continue the effort, that there was a name change, which is, we operate now under the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety, and that also the information helped launch six initiatives that we've been working with through the last year to identify gaps in the community, which is our, our work going forward. And that is Mental Health Services Initiative, Jobs and Job Skills Connection, Mentoring and Expedited Services, Evaluation, a 2-on-1 Youth Resource Guide, and Service Provider Coordination, which I'll go very briefly into, into that. And the first one that I want to point out is the Mental Health Services, which was led by Fran Wagonick from the Santa Barbara Unified School District, who also serves as the Chair of the Strategy Team, the Task Force Strategy Team that meets on a monthly basis. And the group did an inventory assessment and improved coordination, and what was found through the assessment that was done is that there isn't enough services, mental health services for kids to go around. And so Fran and the school district has been partnering with county behavioral wellness to identify how to increase that and how to, how to augment those services. Also, the Jobs and Job Skills Connection, led by Mark Alvarado from the city of Santa Barbara. In that work, we convened various service providers that do youth employment, which includes Pathpoint, the city employment program, the county employment program, Youth Interactive, Partners in Education, and even CalSOB, who hires youth. We also brought, brought these parties together, and really, discussion was assessing what's available to youth. And what we found out is, is that some of these programs had vacancies in youth employment. And so now our work is to really connect these vacancies with their service providers, who, from what we hear from them is that youth need jobs, and so making that connection, left-hand, right-hand connection going forward. A Mentoring and Expedited Services, we, we started and we refocused in 2017. We tried one, one attempt in 2016 that didn't quite work out. In 2017, the strategy team is working on this to identify five youth who can benefit from really an open-door policy to services and programs and being able to tell what works. And so where, where we're at right now with the strategy team is identifying five youth that can benefit from expedited services and mentoring. Evaluation, the service provider network, part of the task force, met this morning, and they meet on a bimonthly, bimonthly basis. And Dr. Sharkey is working with that team, but also going to be working with the community at large to provide an evaluation training and technical support. With the CalGrip funds that we received from the states, we're, we're now using part of those funds for evaluation, and there's a lot of lessons learned from, from that evaluation. In November, the Board of Standing and Community Corrections came to City Hall here to do a site visit, and they were very impressed. And I can share that the one part they were impressed with the most was our evaluation and our data management that UCSB provides. And so they also asked, you know, what is Dr. Sharkey and the UCSB team doing that we can augment or use throughout the state? And so with that, we said, well, let's do it in our community as well, let's expand that. And so going forward, in June, Dr. Sharkey will be providing, her and her team will be providing technical assistance to organizations that are interested in data management and evaluation and, you know, learning how to do evaluation for their program. That way, we could also get the information and say which programs are effective, which ones are not. I know various councils ask us, you know, which, which ones are, are effective, and some of them don't have the capacity. And so that's why we're making this investment and bringing organizations up to speed with evaluation. We've also put together a 2-on-1 Youth Resource Guide. Part of this, we had a lot, we had a good list of providers, but there was a lot missing. And so we had to do some outreach through our network as well as outreach to other organizations that provide services. And we currently have the, the Youth Resource Guide after doing, you know, outreach, and it's, it's not the end, you know, there's more, more programs, some coming, some go, that we need to include in this. With Service Provider Coordination, the group that meets on a bimonthly basis, 22-plus organizations attend on a bimonthly basis, and every year, we host a Service Provider Summit. This past November, it was held at the Correio Rec Center. We bring providers together to really create relationships. Even though people know about programs, there isn't that human connection, and sometimes making referrals can sometimes be a barrier. And so our goal is really to create community within the service providers network. We had 101 participants attend, 41 agencies, and 60-plus programs represented in the service provider. If I may share, one, one example of benefit that came from that is there's a boxing program in the West Side, and, you know, out of a house. And so they've been trying to establish themselves for a while, and at the summit, the person, Danny Madrigal, actually got to sit with Officer Adrian Gutierrez, make the connection, and Adrian says, you know, pal, we've, all the pals in the state have a boxing program, ours doesn't. ours doesn't. And so it was a perfect match to make that connection and make things happen for youth. And so going forward, they're now established and are working to move that forward as a result of, you know, the conference, the connections that are made. These are the organizations that compose the service provider network. Like I mentioned, 22-plus organizations that attend on a bimonthly basis, and it's not the end-all, be-all. There are some other groups who have been invited and for one reason or they haven't been able to attend the meetings or become part of the network. Going forward, from the summit, there was a lot of recommendations that this group wanted to do to increase the relationships and really provide more comprehensive services to families, not just one program, but as a community of service providers. And I will end with that for questions and comments.
Great, and I don't see any speaker slips. I'm going to, and actually, that says something, because if you put up the graph again by the numbers, that, I guess, slide four, I think. Back in 2009, when the number was as high, whenever we had anything related to Task Force on Youth Safety, whatever, this room would be packed, and there'd be a lot of public comment on a variety of different opinions about things. And I think I'd really have to commend you and the whole team and the collaborative work, because obviously, that's amazing results. And it reminds us from past history that we must, like you said, stay on top of it and stay vigilant and not just say, we're done, because we don't want it to revert back to what happened, you know, back in 2009 or 2010 years ago, 2007 especially. So I just want to thank you for your work and commend you for it, and for all of us as a team, working together. But again, by virtue of not having a stack of public commenters, sometimes no news is the good news, right? Mr. Hachges.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's the dog that didn't bark, that's what this is called. Well done. Do you see significant changes between last year and this year? In other words, in the last 12 months, have we got?
Changes in what aspect?
I don't really know. I'm just sort of asking what, it's a broad question, and I'm wondering if you, you know, what's the deal on the street, if I can put it that way?
Good question. And so what I can share from our discussions at the Strategy Team is, you know, in the last year, we have seen a lot of activity with females in the schools. And the school district is monitoring that. UCSB is also doing-
Negative activity.
Right, and aggression, you know, amongst females. And so, you know, it's being monitored by members of the Strategy Team, whether it be law enforcement, whether it be the probation department, whether it be the school district, unexpelled females. And so in their, actually, in our last quarterly meeting, which was at the Faulkner Gallery, the whole meeting was about services for females and what's being provided for females from, you know, the schools, from the school district to the CalGrip for case management for females, to juvenile hall, all the way to human trafficking. And so that's really the issue aside of that. In the streets, I could also say that, you know, we've seen a lot of tagging that's gone up, and we have seen upticks here and there with the population. So to, you know, to be here and say that there is no activity, wouldn't be true. There is activity, you know, in both adult and juveniles, however, it's not where it was in 2007.
Is tagging indicative of anything in particular?
There's different kinds of tagging. There's regular taggers, and then there's gang tagging, and I think we've seen both. So it depends, you know, I think law enforcement can give you a much more better lens as to what they specifically see, but from what they've shared and what we've seen, there has been an increase overall on tagging.
So those numbers are great. Do they reflect a sort of reduction in violence, too?
Yes, and so when we look at the incidence of, you know, juvenile hall, what we saw in 2015 and 2014 was that the population at the hall decreased and started to spike up, and we've kind of seen a flat line now. And so the incidents and all that data shows is that it's kind of, it hasn't continued to decrease, but it's remained the same over the last two, three years.
Right, well, that's never going to reach zero. But do we know how we compare to other comparable populations?
I will say, compared to our neighbors in Ventura and Santa Maria, we do, we're, the rest of the state, we do very well compared to the others.
Well, certainly looks great. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rubio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have already touched on the tagging. We did a cleanup of Bonnet Park two weeks ago. There was so much gang graffiti there. So I've already thanked our staff for cleaning it up very quickly. And I have to say, I haven't been to the East Side. I would assume some West-based youth have been marking up over there as well.
Right, and it's across the region. It's not just within the city. I mean, we've seen it, you know, in other communities throughout the region as well.
So they're tagging, but we haven't seen an uptick in violence. I mean, that's what I'm sort of getting from the street, but at least, I just wanted you, and obviously, you're aware that the East and the West are, they're active, at least with the tagging. Whatever that translates into or escalates into, I hope it doesn't.
Right, and I, you know, I do want to say, we monitor the upticks when, you know, we review the incidents and find out, you know, strategies of connecting specific youth with programming, whether it be a culinary arts program, whether it be the youth employment program, or CalGrip, or any programs that can help intervene.
And that's one of the benefits of having your program in place. I'm echoing the mayor, I think, about not taking our eye off the ball. Now's the time to keep all that foundational work in place.
Right, and really, and also collaborating with our school, because I think our school district does an amazing job of working with the population, both males and females.
And can I just say that Fran Wagonick, now she's Dr. Fran, right? She got a-
Correct.
-PhD in something. An amazing woman, so in touch with young people, does such a good job for the school district. I see her at everything, you know, that I go to that's related to helping young people. I just want to put it out there that she's an amazing asset for the school district and the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
Yeah, I just want to echo the mayor and Councilmember Rubio, their comments about how important it is to maintain this infrastructure and how different it is, this cycle, to have the task force and to have the coordination with the school district. That did not exist in the past. There were responses that were not coordinated, that were much more fragmented and less effective in the past. And so I feel really good about having created this kind of positive coordination and collaboration with all the other agencies and the work that you're doing, you know, to cement that, being different this cycle, that we're not going to let it go, we're not going to have that, those gaps, and be able to maintain this trend in the future. I think that certainly gives us the best chance possible to do that.
Right, and I think, you know, having a cohesive movement in a direction has helped. I think with the few upticks that we have, I think people react, and we've seen, people want to go in different directions, like we have to say, let's stay focused and let's continue the work that we know works.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as a general, more historic comment, when you look at 2009, what was happening in 2009? Terrible things were happening in 2009 financially. We were really, really going into the crash in a big way. City services were being cut in a whole bunch of places. And the effort, and we were experiencing this, these sort of iconic violent activities, and there was a very serious false start that happened on this program. I mean, this thing really did not start well. And Madam Mayor was coming on as a new, as a new mayor, experienced council member. We had Mr. Armstrong here. Mr. Lopez was in the administrative office. And people stuck with it, stuck with it through some really tough times. And that, I congratulate all of you. And I was new to the game, and really was more of an observer and a supporter, but really, and Mr. Alvarado was now changing roles and becoming a city employee as well. So there's a lot of congratulations that are in order. Yes, yes, more needs to be done, and don't stop, and don't rest on your laurels, but also savor the laurels, because they're well-deserved.
And we had that opportunity, actually, at the start of the month. We were invited to present at the LA Gang Conference, Gang Prevention and Intervention Conference, for our work in the region. And, you know, the conference was 600-plus international people. So it was a lot of countries that came to learn about solutions and applying, you know, these principles. And for us, we're one of the few that do a regional approach. And so people also came to the workshop to learn about, you know, how do you do a regional beyond the silo of your own city or your community, and move into affecting a whole community at large.
Great, and just with that, the funding that comes from the different agencies, the county and the other three South Coast cities, and then your own in-kind contribution at CAC, is that secured, as far as you know? I mean, I know it's, we have a line item in our budget, so I know it's there for us, but everyone else?
Yeah, we're going through budgeting and through the budget process right now. Each city has a different process and county. And so so far, we haven't been told no, so we're moving ahead, and we move on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, well, I'm sure there's some new council members and supervisors, you know, who don't have that history. And I know that budgets are tight in some areas, so if there are any mumblings, then I'd like to know about it, so we can, you know, keep that pressure on, so.
We will let you know.
Okay, all right. So this did not need a motion or a vote, so thank you very much for coming in. And look at that, what timing. We are going to move right now into item number 11, if you could read that.
Interviews for city advisory groups.
Great, so thank you who are here today. This is our second of three opportunities to interview for our various boards and commissions. And like I do on all the other occasions, I'm just going to go through the list of the Board or Commission. And if you are an applicant to that, please come on up to the podium here and state your name, so we can get your name checked off on our list. Express your interest and why you're applying to this Board or Commission. If you are seeking an additional term, perhaps something about your past experience and why you're interested in continuing. And to thank you for applying. We usually find that there's one or two boards or commissions where there's multiple applicants and not enough seats for everyone, so it's sometimes a very tough decision for us to make. So having this opportunity is very, very helpful. And let me get to my list here. So we're just going to get right on started, and we'll start with the Architectural Board of Review, if there's anyone here for that. Nope, okay. Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens. Civil Service Commission. Community Development and Human Services Committee. Come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilpersons. I'm Brian Smith. I'm applying for the position on the Human Services and Community Development Committee. I've served twice in the past, and I haven't for about 10 years. I enjoyed my time there, enjoyed the time to get to know the, all the nonprofits a little bit better. And I also like the schedule where you have a pretty intense period of time around February and not the rest of the year, so wanted to serve again for another term and participate in all the local nonprofits.
Great, we have your application as well. And you live in the downtown neighborhood?
Correct.
Right.
Quick question, Patrick. When did you serve before?
You know, it's in my application, but I think, starting probably 20 years ago, I think I've got about 13 years on the committee.
And you know, it's pretty demanding.
Certain times of the year.
Yeah, for sure. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great, anyone else for Community Development and Human Services? Okay. Community Events and Festivals. All right. The Library Advisory Committee. Come on up. Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Bessie Condes, a native Santa Barbaraan, a librarian. And I have had the pleasure of working in a variety of locales. I won't go through all of them. I think you have the application that I completed. My most recent employment was at the California State Library in Sacramento, where I was the Children and Youth Services Consultant for the state, which meant that I worked with public libraries throughout California, planning services for children and families. In addition, I was a regional consultant for six of the library systems in Southern California, one of which is Black Gold, which is the one for the Central Coast. In addition to that, I was a regional consultant for a very short time. So I have really been fortunate in having quite an extensive background. And the one thing I should mention to you, I also worked on the bond measure for construction and renovation of public libraries throughout the state. I evaluated applications and reviewed architectural plans for those as well. And the reason that I would like to be considered as a candidate for this position is that my experience is really extensive, and I'm really, I've been very fortunate. I've worked, in addition to the state library, I've worked with Los Angeles Public Library, both in the inner city, South Central Los Angeles. I've also worked in Winnipeg, Manitoba, Canada, that's right above North Dakota, and it's cold there. In addition to that, I've had the opportunity to teach. So I am a library user, most definitely, and a real advocate for libraries. And I think that those of us that work on behalf of public libraries know that public libraries have a very long tradition of being the cornerstone of sustainable communities. It's one of the few community agencies that provides services to a variety of constituents, including seniors, the visually and physically impaired, those in need of literacy services, parents, families, children, and youth. And an investment in library service, and I'm pleased to know that Santa Barbara and the surrounding areas have outstanding services for children and youth. So I did want to let you know what my background is, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Library Advisory Committee, come on up.
Thank you. My name is TJ Brashears. I'm seeking to serve on the Library Advisory Committee. I have been a huge fan of libraries my entire life, which may not be all that long, but I realize that part of what I am able to bring to the table is my youth. A 27-year-old male is probably not the average applicant for the Library Advisory Committee, and I acknowledge that. I think in making sure that libraries are accessible to everyone, appealing to a diverse perspective, and everyone in the community is important. Twenty-somethings in particular are becoming exceptionally vocal, but also searching for knowledge and finding ways of discernment. I'm not saying they're the only demographic to be looking at, for sure, but an important one, in many ways, an emerging one. Thinking of new avenues for the library to interact with the culture around it, an institution that's been around for thousands of years, that has held societies together, needs to adapt and figure out how to best speak to the people, make sure that they are gaining knowledge, but more importantly, gaining wisdom from that. I think of emerging trends, something like podcasts, which we had radio before, but this is a new, a slightly new medium. How does an institution like the library, that's so focused on the written word, interact with the spoken word, to really give people the ability to exchange information, to become more informed citizens, and therefore, better people in the whole? So I would love your consideration for this position and would welcome any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I saw some other hands come up. Whoever comes up, come on up. Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Pat Salee. I've been your representative to the County Library Advisory Committee for two years now. And it's really interesting this year, just to show you how important libraries are. The last two years when I applied, I was the only applicant, so I was pretty sure I was okay there. About a year and a half, two years prior to that, there were no applicants. And as I understand it, you have 19 applicants. And I think that's fabulous, because it shows how much our community loves libraries. So I'm sure you have a tough decision to make, but 19 people, that's impressive. As I said, I've been your representative on the Library Advisory Committee, and we pay, play, excuse me, a really important role in looking at how all our libraries are managed, how resources are used, and we advise the Board of Supervisors, we advise city councils. And there is really a lot going on in libraries countywide. And in particular, this upcoming fiscal year- fiscal year, hopefully only this one, where budgets are anticipated to be down, the use of resources for libraries is, are, it's really, really important that they're used wisely, and the Library Advisory Committee has been fairly static in the sense of, people have been on the committee for quite a while, they have learned a lot, funding for libraries is way more complicated than most people have, would think, and we are working with the county, the three zones, to look at, maybe there are better, different organizational structures to manage libraries, to use those very scarce resources more carefully, and I have really enjoyed doing that, my history of working for the city many years ago, doing contract work for the city, I know a lot about how it operates, and I feel that's been very helpful, so I, I would appreciate being reappointed to the Library Advisor, Advisory Committee on your behalf, I understand you have a lot of very good candidates, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, since you are our current representative, and there's been, as you mentioned, quite a bit in the media, and a lot of, lot of work that you're doing, I, I love your perspective of the recommendation that did go to the Board of Supervisors just recently, and what your perspective was in getting to that point, 'cause I know that issue is not completely settled yet, and, but since you're right here, I might as well get your feedback.
There, there are two big pressing issues that are facing libraries, there's lots, but the two biggest, for Zone One, which goes up to Bulton-Solvang, the funding that comes down from the county is on a per capita basis, and until recently, no one realized that GOLIDA had been assigned a disproportionately high number of people, and there may have been good reasons, but we don't know why, so there's been a lot of discussion about that, but that's really important, 'cause 5,000 people, and if the board allocates $8 per capita, you can do the math, it makes a big difference to the budgets, so I made the motion at the Library Advisory Committee to split the baby, it was the Solomon motion, instead of GOLIDA getting all the, 80% of the people in the unincorporated areas, let's give them half of that, and the other half going to the other four branches, it seemed fair, my understanding is, the Library Advisory Committee meeting last week, and I wasn't able to attend, they went back to the idea of GOLIDA keeping that for one year, because they are studying leaving the Zone One, and part of that would be a request to the city to slow down the increase in the administrative fee that is charged to the branches, so it's, those have, you know, a yin and yang, they, they relate to each other, and it's, it's very complicated, there's no question, and every dollar means so much to all the libraries, and they do provide a lot of services, all the digital books, magazines, et cetera, you get more for your money there, but the public has to be educated, so there's just a lot of facets, but the Library Advisory Committee has been really important to this whole discussion, and very collaborative, and we're trying to do the best for everyone, and that's not always easy, as you well know.
No, thank you for that, Ms. Murillo, did you have another question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Ms. Salee, my understanding is that the funding, it wasn't that GOLIDA was getting more than they should have, your, the Advisory Committee last week looked at some different, they looked, they went back to the old calculations, which were more accurate, that's my understanding, and it, and I think, I looked at the numbers, and I think that is a more fair assessment to go forward, the adding, or rather, increasing the administrative fee is a different issue that we'll be looking at, I would just like to know, that you were supposed to be representing the city of Santa Barbara, meaning our libraries on the east side and downtown, do, do you feel like you did that?
Well, when you look at the mission statement for the Library Advisory Committee, it talks about all libraries.
Okay.
And, and that includes the branch libraries, and I think I have tried to do that, could I do a better job, of course I could.
Can I ask you what your relationship with the Montecito Library is?
Sure.
Do you live in Montecito?
No, I live downtown.
Okay.
And I am on the Board of the Montecito, Friends of the Montecito Library, several members of the Library Advisory Committee are on their local Friends Board, I mean, that's how most people learn about the Library Advisory Committee.
Except I think there was a tension about money going, more money going to Montecito, and I just, whoever we appoint from the city of Santa Barbara needs to look out for our city monies, our resources.
Right.
Our patrons, our east side, and our downtown, so thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Who's next for this, no, I'm just kidding, come on, I am, please, come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Susan Newfelt, I came last week, and for some reason, I don't understand.
You don't need to do a second time, you know that.
I know that, but I had a kind of anxiety attack, and so I didn't present all the things I wanted to say, and so I, even for my own self-respect, I had to come back. I spent some time talking to Jessica Cadiante, who is the library director downtown, and what I learned from her is that this position is much more complicated and political than most people realize, and so we need to stand fast and yet be collaborative, we have the only fully functioning municipal library in the county system, the only one that's acknowledged as such by the state, our goals are different from those of Lompoc and Santa Maria, the other zones in the system, we strive to be a center of community activity, not just a place for lending books and other items, because we're one voice among the three zones in the county, it is important for us to stand strong, we've been subsidizing other libraries in the system, Jessica believes that we need to end the subsidy for the other libraries in the county, as we need our own funding in this time when there's a shortage of funds for all libraries. In terms of my career, I was right out of school, public school teacher, went back for a PhD, and then became a professor at Lewis Clark State College, then I was a psychologist in private practice here for 20 years, and I taught in the Clinical Counseling Psych Program at UCSB for 15, I was the clinic director there, and I trained and supervised doc student therapists, I managed the budget, and as a faculty member and clinic director, I served on university committees, attended regional conventions where I became president, responsible not only for meetings, but arranging and budgeting a conference at Casa de María, and of course, as I mentioned last time, we've loved the library since we came, and have taken our daughter, and now our grandson, for its services, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, anyone else for the library, come on up, for the library board, no, okay, well, we're going through each commission, so when you hear the one that you applied for, then come on up, so Creeks Advisory? Harbor Commission? Come on up, hello. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers and Mayor Schneider, my name is Sho-Ham Yaniv, and I'm applying for the Harbor Commission of Santa Barbara, it's my first time being in front of a city council like this, so I might be a little nervous, but I've been living in Santa Barbara since 2004, been actively participating in the sport of outrigger canoe paddling, which has me at the harbor about five or six days a week, and because of that, I'm kinda taking a keen interest in the harbor and the things around it, and I'm just interested in taking a part of the city that I live in, and have been living in for, going on, what, 13 years now, and here I am, just to present myself, see if you guys have any questions for me, I don't have really a lot of experience, per se, on being on a commission like this, but I hope to bring a fresh, young voice to the Harbor Commission, to hopefully help make it better, one of the things I noticed when sitting down is this picture of the harbor, and I think it's a really good thing to point out that we have a lot of cruise ships that come into the harbor, and I've noticed that a lot of the cruise ship passengers, they don't get diverted into the harbor, they actually get diverted into the city, but I think it'd be great if we can get those cruise ship passengers to get diverted into the harbor, so the businesses that are there can get some of the, you know, money that they bring in, as well as, you know, make it a nice place, I personally enjoy going out and using the businesses that we have there, we have a great fish market, as well as the restaurants and things like that, and just improve it.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you, anyone else for the Harbor Commission? Historic Landmarks, come on up.
Good afternoon, my name is Steve Howes, and I'm applying for a position on the Historic Landmarks Commission, most of you know that I'm a practicing architect, and I've served on both Architectural Board of Review and Historic Landmarks Commission in the past eight years on each, as well as liaison to the signed committee while on each of those, so in answer to the standard questions, I am familiar with the time commitments, the skills, the committee assignments, and the experience necessary to serve effectively. As you may also know, I have long been involved in historic preservation issues in Santa Barbara, having served on the Board of the Loboro Theater Foundation for nearly 20 years, I am currently on the Board of the Santa Barbara Conservancy, and was very involved in the production and design of our recently released book, Santa Barbara, A Guide del Pueblo Viejo. It's been seven or eight years since I concluded my last term on the Historic Landmarks Commission, but I remember fondly the special projects I worked on, including the EPV guidelines, and the city's lighting ordinance and lighting design guidelines. I've always been guided by my belief that my role on any design review board is to uphold the highest standard of design and execution for built projects in Santa Barbara, while at the same time having respect and compassion for the applicants before us, I believe in taking the time necessary to explain my position to an applicant, but being clear and firm early on if a proposal is going in an unacceptable direction, so thank you for your consideration of my application, are there any questions?
Any questions? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Murillo.
Thank you, Mr. Howes, you said?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Ouch.
House, so sometimes there's a tension when people want Spanish architecture versus modern, I mean, I know this is HLC, so that's pretty specific, and then we also have a tension sometimes with dense housing and not-so-dense housing, can you remark on both of those things in, in your perspective?
Well, I think it's a given that it's gonna be Spanish Colonial Revival or some related aesthetic for the downtown core, so there's not an option to go thoroughly modern, but there's always opportunity for interpretations, just as Jeff Shelton interprets that idiom, as far as the dense housing, that wasn't really an issue last time I was on HLC, so I'll certainly be confronted with that, and it's really all about neighborhood appropriateness, and seeing how that can be accommodated.
Right, and, and I, do you acknowledge that we have a housing crunch?
Of course we do.
And, and that the average unit size density program is, is a response to that?
Yes, it is, and I might have some opinions on that, but.
What are those opinions, that's what I'm asking, thank you.
Well, you know, again, I, I have been out of the loop over the last several years, but I feel that it may not have been conceived as well as it could have, and I think that I recognize the challenge in kinda slowing down the process to reevaluate, and it's, that's, that's a big challenge that the city faces.
And you know that we're in that process right now.
I do, I do, and then the same three letters, the ADUs, I'm currently involved with clients on four of those projects, so that's also addressing the issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, I'm not asking you to make a determination now on things that might come, I don't think that's fair, but I have confidence in your skills, and I've seen you on the Assigned Ordinance Committee, I appreciate your work there.
Thank you.
Best of luck here, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone else for the Historic Landmarks Commission, come on up. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Sullivan Israel, I'm 16-years-old, I go to Laguna Blanca School, and I first just wanna thank everyone for the opportunity in letting me come here, never done anything like this before, it's pretty exciting, and I want to apply for the Historic Board, mainly because I love Santa Barbara history as well as architecture, and I know a lot about it, I've read the Pueblo Viejo book, for instance, and it's something I love, however, I found out that I wouldn't be able to attend the meetings as they take place during school hours, and of course, being in high school, that's, it's crazy, it's a very important time, so I can't miss school, however, I spoke to Deborah Applegate downstairs, and she helped me, and she said, I would, I also wanted to be on the Architectural Board of Review, which I, I could go to those meetings, as they are after school hours, but they, I want, so if I wanna be an intern on, for them, however, they don't have an internship program, and, yeah, I was hoping that they would, similar to what some of the other boards have, and she told me that if I could get two city council members, if I could convince them to go to the Board, or basically agree to try and get an internship program going, I could be an intern on that Board, I would really enjoy that, I think, I wanna study architecture in college, I think I wanna be an architect, it's a big passion of mine, drawing, architecture designing, and I already am involved in local architectural programs, and I also, especially because it's here in Santa Barbara, my hometown, it's just, I think it's a, such a unique place, and I would love to be a part of that, without taking someone's spot as an actual Board Member, because I don't think I'm ready for that, I am still in high school, so I would rather be an intern, so thank you very much.
Mr. Hotchkiss has a question.
I admire your ambition, please give me a call, I'll try to help you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I did wanna mention, I already have a meeting with the mayor and Ms. Murillo.
I saw the name, I'm like, where did I see that name?
Yes, yes, so that's next week, I think.
Yeah, Ms. Murillo?
Well, I was thinking we could easily develop an internship, you, you could attend the meetings that you can go to, we never want you to ditch school.
Yeah.
But the meetings are repeated on TV or online, and so you could, it's not the same thing, actually, being in the room with the flavor and the people, but it covers it pretty well, and you could experience the meetings through, through, you know, electronically, and write a report, I mean, there's a way to do an internship if you want to, so.
Okay, thank you, I did not know about that.
And you have an appointment with me, I think, too?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
He's doing the rounds, all right.
Yeah, I'm finding out what, how to get things done.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in today, and, you know, we're not gonna say that, you know, we have to, we're gonna have to talk to the Community Development Department about what that would entail, your request, but certainly hearing you out will be important, so I appreciate your time here today.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, anyone else for Historic Landmarks? Okay, Housing Authority.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Members of City Council, my name is Pat Wheatley, and I have applied for the Housing Authority Commission, I have had the pleasure and honor of serving this community as very, very active in health and human services since the early 70s, until my, not too recent, three-year retirement, three years ago, but I continue to be very, very mindful and involved in human services now as a volunteer, I was involved in, in housing issues really from the very beginning of, of my career, when I came back to Santa Barbara, I was born and raised here, and it is something that is extremely important to me, in the 80s, one of the programs of the agency I was the executive director for was Share Home, which was facilitating senior and handicapped and other needs shared housing, so very, very interesting experience, and it was highly, highly supported by the city council, so we had a wonderful experience through those periods of time through community development block grant funding, I also, in the 80s, was extremely. I also, in the 80s, was extremely involved in what became Transition House, and long before it had a name, more when it was more of a social movement to address homelessness in the Santa Barbara community. And I carried as a volunteer for 17 years as a caseworker at Transition House. So I'm very, very familiar with the challenges that are besetting families and individuals in our community. In the last 10 years, I was very active and involved at Grace Lutheran Church and took on the leadership of what now has become Grace Village for Seniors and, and the overall donation of that land to the Housing Authority. So I am very familiar with housing issues in Santa Barbara, both as a social worker as well as a volunteer, and would be honored to be part of our Housing Authority in Santa Barbara. I'm intimately available and willing to work with them.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for your role with the current housing project. I know you were instrumental in making that happen up on Upper State Street, so.
Indeed, it was an honor.
Yeah. Thank you. Housing Authority. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and city council. Thank you for this opportunity to, to address you today. My name is Catherine Woodford. I currently serve as the vice chair of the Santa Barbara Housing Commission. I also represent the Housing Authority on the Board of Garden Court, and have in the past served for eight years as a member and also chair of the CDBG Committee. I'm here to respectfully request an appointment, a reappointment for a four-year extension of my current term as commissioner. I have a 20-year long-term commitment, almost 20 years, to the Housing Authority. It is operated with the utmost integrity and efficiency by a dedicated management team and staff, and I am very proud to play a small part in that. Several weeks ago, I attended the National Housing Legislative Conference in Washington, DC, where I learned of the formidable changes anticipated for public housing in the near future with the federal government. This year, we are facing a year of transition stemming from unprecedented federal budget cuts and the decrease in the number of available Section 8 vouchers. There are currently 4,500 applicants on our city waiting list, and the list to accept new applicants has been closed since 2014. Cuts and possible elimination of the all-important CDBG funding, increased unavailability of affordable rental properties, and possible changes to the low-income tax credit program are all important issues we will be dealing with this year. Fortunately, due to wise management and anticipation of the changes, the Housing Authority has been able to use the low-income tax credit program to divest itself of much of the federal bureaucracy. But we are still very dependent on Section 8 vouchers, CDBG funding, and also the low-income tax credit program to update and expand the current inventory of public housing. We continue to be at the forefront in working with other community groups in trying to house the homeless, build housing, and support programs aimed at veterans, those suffering with mental health issues, and recovering from substance abuse, as well as those young people aging out of foster care. However, with severe budget cuts looming, our efforts become more complex and difficult. In addition, the Housing Authority itself is in a year of transition, following the retirement of its longtime former director. His replacement, Mr. Rob Fredericks, is a dedicated and respected executive who, together with the continuity of an extremely strong management team, will undoubtedly continue to maintain the organization level of excellence. Finally, the new gardens on hope continues in the planning stages. The first garden court was in its initial planning when I first joined the commission almost 20 years ago, and I would like to be present to help bring this second senior supportive housing program to fruition. I hope you will recognize my enthusiasm and dedication to this organization, and that you will find my experience and commitment will be of value in helping maintain community, sorry, help maintain continuity and support during these unstable times. I ask that you consider my reappointment for those purposes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez has a question.
So you've served two terms so far?
Yes.
And I want to reward your enthusiasm and hard work by helping you retire or join another commission. We have kind of a standing policy. After two terms, we want to give people a breather. There's, you don't want to take a breather now?
No, I, this will probably be my last term. I am vice chair, in line to be chair of the commission next year if I'm, if you reappoint me. I've served all these years and never chaired. I've been vice chair, but never, I'm always off by the time it's to chair. I, I would like to finish my next four years with this commission. I, I feel it's become part of me, and I am really committed it. I've served in many capacities in this community on volunteer organizations, so this isn't been my only one. Right now, Garden Court and the Housing Authority are my total focus for the next four years, if I am so fortunate. So, thank you.
I can see how you're going to make a very substantial contribution. I just think about the other agencies that would love to have that expertise. You know, People Self-Help or Habitat for Humanity. And my personal goal is to try to get a lot of our renters into ownership situations. So playing a role with maybe the Housing Task Force would be great, but I'll respect your, your desire to be back on this authority.
Well, we do work with all those organizations. We work closely with all those organizations you mentioned. It takes a village, and Santa Barbara is very fortunate in having this incredible interaction with organizations who work together and try to solve the terrible problem we have here with homelessness, and it's going to get worse. If they cut those Section 8 vouchers, you ain't seeing nothing about homelessness on these streets.
Absolutely. And that's why we're really trying to push for that 80 to, to 120% AMI. So, thanks a lot.
It's taken me a long time to get as much expertise as I have in this. It's not something you walk on the first day and understand low-income tax credits. It took me years to figure all that out. And I feel now I have the knowledge where I can be a really good commissioner for the next difficult few years we're going to face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's nice to be before you again. It's been a long time. I'm Dave Gustafson, and obviously I'm applying for the position on the Housing Authority Commission for a number of reasons. One is that I spent my career in affordable housing as a passion, and I can't seem to let it go in retirement, so here I am. Our Housing Authority, I'll echo what Catherine said, our Housing Authority is the finest and most productive that I've ever encountered in my career, and I'd like to offer whatever small contributions I could to continue its success. I know most of the commissioners. I have a strong professional relationship with lots of the key staff members, gained while serving as your housing redevelopment manager and your assistant community development director and your acting director, and working on much of the projects you see out there that are people's projects. I was privileged to be in the ground floor in terms of the approval processes and the funding on a lot of them. And representing the city, I planned and coordinated the joint public meetings between the city council and the board of the, of the housing commissioners. And if you want to go back to my roots, I started in this business way back as, as an employee of a large housing authority where I was responsible for supervising Section 8 and housing rehabilitation, which the, this Housing Authority doesn't do, the budget and also public housing. So I've got that history of not just working for the city or the county or working for nonprofits, but working for a housing authority as well. You supplied us some great questions for us to respond to, and I hope I get them all here as, as we go through. Another one I wanted to touch on is board work. I understand, I think, board work pretty well. To me, it's a matter of governance and strategic planning. It's not about operation, day-to-day operations. Sometimes when I was first serving on boards, it took me a little bit of time to figure that out. But it's about setting the course and, and providing the guidance. My current experience includes now being the chair of the board of People's Self-Help Housing and the chair of the board of People's Affiliate Property Management Entity, the Duncan Group. You know us well from lots of very successful projects here, many of which were aided by the Housing Authority, providing financing and other help. Right now, we're operating out of San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Ventura County, and even in these trying times, we're growing exponentially. So we're up to about 47 affordable housing developments and about 1,500 sweat equity ownership houses for low-income folks. I've served in the past on the board of Sarah House, the end-of-life care facility developed by the Housing Authority, and the board on the Coastal Housing Coalition, which works to educate and advocate for workforce housing. So the one question I think I struggled with was, what, what do you think at this point you'd want to see change or add to the Housing Authority? And to me, they're so stellar, it's really hard to say, you know, and maybe if I get the opportunity to be there and I see things for a while, there might be some things I'll be ready and willing to recommend. But at this point, I think it's an exceptionally run organization. I think I maybe just would underline what I think's important in these times, these uncertain times, and with a, a new administration and not knowing where things are going, and again, the community development block grant funding, et cetera, is the need to be as collaborative as possible. So the degree that, I think, Councilman Dominguez, you said, the degree that these agencies can work together to deal with all of these housing issues, that's a really positive thing. I, I think in particular, in that regard, what's been really important to me is supportive services for the folks that get the affordable housing units. It isn't, your job's not done when you, you build a unit and you put somebody in it. You have to have an extensive network of supportive services that, that help them sustain their tenancy by getting assistance in mental health issues, budgeting, housekeeping, ongoing education, a whole host of things that some of them may not be, been exposed to as they could have been, and that'll help the people and the whole project be better. The Housing Authority has a great network of collaboratives on that kind of sustaining assistance, and I'd like to see them make collaborate with other agencies. I know People's Self-Help Housing has an extensive one, too, and maybe there would be opportunities to team up with them and others. And in terms of projects, again, on the collaborative front, I think it, it's possible that, especially with the scarcity of available land, that maybe we could, some of the nonprofits together could collaborate on joint projects. The Housing Authority, for instance, would be able to bring, bring public housing or Section 8 housing, and maybe another entity that can do a different income category could, on the same property through, you know, joint acquisition and a subdivision, could do workforce housing or something, so that we can maximize the potential without overdoing the density of all the things that we can do. So I think that's really it. It's a pleasure to see you all again.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Dominguez.
So you're the current board chair of People's Self-Help Housing?
Yes, sir, I am.
When does that tenure end?
I have another two years, I believe.
So does that pose any conflicts that you're?
That's, that's the good question, and I've asked that question a whole lot. I think it would be good for someone to ask that question of, of Rob Fredericks, the director of the Housing Authority. I have asked that question of my fellow board members, and all of the responses I got have been positive and enthusiastic. And again, it fronted on the collaboration thing, that it's good for these types of agencies. We all need to work together, and this could make it perhaps more possible. Our CEO is strongly in favor of it. So I haven't encountered any negatives. It's, it's worthy of thought, and that's why I asked all of my board members what they thought. I can tell you, I would not approach it without having an absolute adherence to any conflict of interest. I think housing providers are collaborative by nature, and in the past, the Housing Authority and the City of Santa Barbara collaborated a lot on projects, and so did People's and the Housing Authority. I think that can continue. We have a precedent where a number one of our, one of our board members is also on the Housing Authority Board of the City of Ventura, and we again see that as a positive benefit, that it provides continuity and collaboration. And we wouldn't, we, we've never had a history of fighting over sites. It's been great. I mean, Rob person would step away or we'd step away, and that kind of attitude would continue, I think, as far as my participation. If any issue came up where we were competing for funding, or we were competing for property, I would recuse myself from the consideration of that by both boards.
So aren't you, in a sense, always competing for funding with, with the tax credits, for example?
We, we are. That's true, yes. But, yeah, that, that's, I'd have to acknowledge that, but I don't think I can remember a circumstance where we were head-to-head over a particular allocation on tax credit financing. Just so hard to get there for anybody. And I think we, I think the one agency that got there would be supported by the other.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? You missed an RDA-related thing earlier today.
Oh.
You know, but you wouldn't have wanted to hear it.
Old times.
It was not.
Wasn't good? Okay.
Well, you know.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for the Housing Authority? Come on up. Good afternoon.
I'm here to petition for a position on the commission. Madam Mayor and members, as of March 31st, 2016, the last and latest accounting for the City of Santa Barbara Housing Authority, it had an operating revenue of $36,835,340. It has a total assets of $106,702,120. It has a staff of 48 people. It serves approximately 1,500 rental owners, 2,366 people on Section 8, and a total of 3,628 housing units. This Housing Authority has won many awards and is respected amongst the Housing Authority communities as one of the premier agencies. It is considered a medium-large enterprise, smaller than Chicago, larger than Crescent City. I've wanted to be on the Housing Authority Commission for a long time. I petitioned previously two or three times, but the incumbents were reappointed, so I stopped asking. I've attended just about every commission meeting since 2010, to the present, just as I had attended just about every city council meeting between 2010 and 2014. I petition now because I feel a greater urgency to offer new thoughts and greet challenges. The question occurs to me with such a vast presence with many customers and millions of dollars of taxpayers' money, why these commission meetings are not on city television? With such a large budget and so many people being affected, why is there not greater transparency? I support affordable housing, and I also question the "build baby, build" mantra. The question is not, should we build, but where? I do not recall that the citizenry has had the opportunity to have a meaningful conversation with the Housing Authority's major plans. Resistance to building is usually from the local community based upon a specific building without a purview of overall plans. Large buildings that affect the nature of a community and the city in general receive token and uncoordinated comments and resistance, and thus usually fail. Architecture creates attitude. Surrounded by concrete canyons is different than single-story units surrounded by green. Plopping an aircraft carrier-sized building in a single-story community alters the ambience of that community with more people, more cars, and more activity. We want more public input so that the populace can be content with its neighborhoods rather than putting up with them. The economic engine of Santa Barbara is the hospitality industry. Cruise ships, cruise ships stop in Santa Barbara not because of what it is, but because of what it is not. People come here to get away from their crowded surroundings. If we allow the constant increase of housing to affect that standing, the tourists will not have a reason to come. I have been scoffed at because of this opinion. Santa Barbara will never lose its tourist standing, I am told. I hope I am wrong and my detractors are right. But I would like to see debate on the topic of "build baby, build." As well, since the Housing Authority is its own legal entity, making its own policies and decisions, the citizens do not have as much influence on decisions affecting their neighborhoods. A building disappears without too much warning. Renters did not have the same rights of political expression that homeowners did because rental owners banned posting political signs because of their nuisance and eyesore presence. In 2011, the legislature passed a law, Cali- Renters could assert their First Amendment constitutional right of political expression, and the rental owners had the guarantee of avoiding having their property turned into one big poster board. People who rented apartments were limited to posting in their windows since they did not own or control the common areas. People who rented houses could post on areas in their control, such as fences. SHIFCO has fourplexes that are classified as apartments, yet have patios and fences. The Housing Authority states that since the units were classified as apartment, display signs was limited to the windows. This was not the intention of the Legislature, which wanted more expression, not less. I want to bring in expansion of that expression. Could I use the... This picture shows the difference between window display and fence display, and the Housing Authority said, no, you can't put it on the fence, you have to put it in the window because of your classification. Poor people get poor, I would like to challenge that. Poor people get poor housing. Why do condominiums, such as ones next to the Arlington Theater, get concrete floors and metal studs, and poor people housing is built with plywood floors and wooden studs? The result is that poor people apartments are noisier from outside sounds and neighbor sounds. If you can hear your neighbor's toilet flush, this is a management problem, not a resident problem. I propose we take a new look at poor people housing construction. I propose we build a sanctuary instead of housing. With the housing mentality, a building is constructed with the thought of placing a person or people in the structure. The person accommodates the building. With the sanctuary mentality, the building is constructed around the person, intending to the person's needs for privacy and quiet. The walls would have more noise, reducing insulation. The floors would not sound like a drum to the person below when the resident walked across the floor. The mentality of treating poor people as second-class citizens by government agencies is well documented, and must be kept in mind when making even the most seemingly benign decisions. Constructing buildings based upon sanity rather than money is a step in the right direction. As the nine Supreme Court justices have divided the country into nine sections for each to be, each to be attentive to, so I suggest that we divide the city into seven sections for each of the Commissioners to be responsible for. This means a town hall meeting quarterly, or whenever it happens, and the people have a specific person to respond to. Instead of having ivory tower representation as we have now, let us have onsite representation for the people to have greater access to those who make decisions that affect the people's lives. Recently, the media has shown us how corruption can infiltrate housing authorities. The abuse of tax credit financing has produced scandals. Part of the problem is that the investors can remain anonymous and unaccountable. For transparency with taxpayers' money, full disclosure would instill public confidence. There have been too many stories of this Housing Authority...
Mr. Burke, do you have that whole thing? I'm not quite sure how much longer. I just saw you pick up a whole lot of, how, how long is your presentation?
It's ten minutes total.
Okay, because I think you're just about there, right?
I have a little to go. I can cut if you want.
Well, if you can just, if you can just keep it to your application to the Housing Authority Commission and certainly philosophies about how commissions or law should work, we're more than welcome to send us that information by...
Am I putting you to sleep?
No, 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 but...
Why not? I would like to continue on, but if you want me to cut, I will.
I just want you to keep it to your own application about this particular Housing Authority, and so the bigger, the bigger picture is you're getting into. If you'd like to send that to us, that would be just fine.
Okay, well, that's, there's just a paragraph on that, and that's it.
Okay.
"There have been too many stories of this Housing Authority exceeding its discretion with slander and eviction. These incidents need to be brought to light and not kept in silence and secrets. Policies need examining to ensure this vulnerable population is served and not abused and not fall victim to a bureaucracy that has its own welfare placed before the residents' citizens' rights. When Dale Francisco stepped down recently, I asked him, right here, if I could have a moment. He said yes. I said to him that I despised his politics," and that's the word I used, despised, "but that in all the time I witnessed him in this room, there was never a nanosecond did I doubt he had the best interest of the citizens of Santa Barbara and the best interest of the City of Santa Barbara in mind. He said, 'Thank you.' I want to be a member of that club. I have other plans and policies to bring to the Commission. Would this create chaos, confusion, and consternation? We can only hope.'" Hope is exactly what I want to bring. Hope for more green grass and blue skies. Hope for peace and quiet rather than the noise of the street and traffic. Hope for greater transparency and trust. Hope to live without fear, compromising one's rights for fear of eviction. I want the Housing Authority to be a vehicle to manifest the promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. As a spring zephyr waists through the trees, as the sundown lights our lives with color and brilliance, as the giggle of a baby reminds us how close we are to our source, as we pause to reflect on the magic of watching our children grow, so that the natural nature of our hearts, which dwell in holy peace, be the guiding radiance our governments offer for its words, deeds, and thoughts, creating a sanctum for where we, the people, to manifest our destiny."
Thank you. Thank you.
I will close with my usual closing words. You are a blessing on the planet. Wherever you walk is holy ground. Your life is a sacrament we're celebrating. Madam Mayor, Members.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Anyone else for the Housing Authority? Okay. Living Wage Advisory Committee?
Mayor Schneider and Counsel, I'm Dick Flax, and I'm hoping to be reappointed to the Living Wage Advisory Committee. It is, I didn't realize till Councilman Dominguez said it, that there's some informal idea that after two terms, you should take a breather. I don't have that much more possibly time on the planet to take too many breathers, so, but I, I would be concerned about fresh blood being on this committee, except for the fact that the majority of people on the committee now have been there for less than two years, some for just a couple of months. So, it actually has had quite a good turnover, and that actually increases maybe the desirability of having someone with a longer institutional memory there, because we are going through some reappraisal of the whole concept dictated in part by the fact that, on the one hand, the Obamacare requirements for employer healthcare has affected the concepts behind how the living wage was set in the city. In the past, we had several, at least theoretically available tiers for different levels of living wage, hourly wage, depending on the health benefits that were or were not provided by the contractors who were paying their workers. Now, that is sort of academic, and so we've been discussing that. And then, of course, the state minimum wage law, which will take several years to go into full effect, certainly relates to the living wage in Santa Barbara. And so, we've been looking at the whole question, really, of the cost of living in Santa Barbara, and how does this program, the living wage, fit into the whole wage issue as it's being raised in the state and nationally? I was, I'm, the slot I'm in, in this committee is to represent an organization that advocates for the living wage, and that did help advocate for that. I'm on the Board of the Cause Action Fund, and I'm on the Board of SBCAN. Both of these groups, in one, in the case of Cause, Pueblo, which was the predecessor of Cause, helped to create the ordinance in the first place, lobbied for it. I was part of that process, and in fact, the idea of having a living wage committee was something that I was proposing at the time the ordinance was being shaped. So, I kind of want to be there, if you guys think it's advisable, which I would suggest that you should. And I'm not sure what, what else to say about this. It's an interesting process to consider a law like this and what its effects are. It's hard to know. I'm a sociologist, I like data, hard to get data. But one thing that you did recently, and I'm not sure where this stands now, was to provide a little bit of a budget so that we could audit, at times, employers to see that compliance with the law was actually happening. And that, that's a considerable benefit, just having that in place, because the suspicion on the part of some employers has been that others are perhaps cheating. So, now we have this mechanism for improving the, that enforcement. Anti-climatically, I'll stop there and see if there's anybody who wants to ask me anything about this.
Sure. Any questions? Mr. Dominguez.
It's less of a question, Dr. Flax, but your situation's a little unique because you're in a slot where there's only two applicants for two slots, so the two-term rule probably isn't as applicable here. And of course, again, I would make the invitation to you to take all this expertise you have and place it in other organizations if you can, but I know you're already doing that because I know...
Yes, I do.
You belong to many other organizations.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, it's in fact a problem in recruiting for the committee, is that most of the seats on it are slotted. Right now, we have a very good complement of people, and I must say, a Council Member, Maria, has been active, too, with the committee, which hasn't always been true, that the Council Liaison has been there that much. So, it's interesting for me to be part of this process, make sure that it can work. And we have a good climate on the committee now in terms of shared desire to make it work, which I think is always a nice thing.
Great. Well, thank you for your service today. Thank you. Anyone else for Living Wage? Metropolitan Transit District, I see two people in the back.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and Members of the Council. My name's Olivia Rodriguez. I'm here today before you for reappointment to the Board. I have served on the Board as a county representative back in 2003 to 2006, and got to the position of Chair during those three years, and went back to practice law and do some other things, and then was, I believe I made a mistake, I have not been on since 2007, I believe it's 2010. I believe, I completed a term for a previous Board Member, and then I've had my own four-year term, so I've actually been a Board Member for six years. I did serve as the Secretary for the last five, and I'm, I'm very well aware of the time necessary to serve, and I'm willing to do that. I know a lot about the MTD. It's taken even to this day, there's still things that we need to go over and be reminded of, because there's just so many moving parts, to the loans and the connections that we have and all the organizations that we meet with. And so, but I'm very familiar with the goals, the needs, and, you know, the struggles that it's taken to keep it running efficiently. You know, we need more buses, we're always a struggle with the electric buses that we're trying to find. Hiring of employees has been a struggle that I believe the Board and our staff has done an excellent job in, in working on. And I think that all this institutional memory that I, that I bring to the Board, along with my legal background, serves, serves the Board well, and I've been told that it does. Unfortunately, recently, we've had a couple pretty serious legal matters that we had to deal with, and I feel that my background contributed significantly to assisting the Board in either going one direction or another. And that made me feel really proud. And I do believe that the structure of the, of the Board is, is very good. It's very good that we have city members, we have county members, we have an at-large member, Galita. We have a, a Galita, the Galita Mayor, Paula Perot, and then Carpinteria. I think that that, that, that system brings together many people from the community with varied backgrounds and experience, and I believe that that makes the Board much stronger, and I'd like to continue doing that. I have heard about the two-term, I mean, issue that, that has been brought up several times by Mr. Dominguez, and I feel I've got one more, one more good term in me. And I just feel that we've done, there's so many questions on here, I know, and I don't want to make it very long, but there are a few things that I just, I'd like to stay on, because we're coming around with some issues that had started back in 2003 that I'm very familiar with, like Cayera, we're looking at that again. We're looking at, again, the electric board, the electric buses that are coming back around again, a lot of issues related to all that. And of course, issues with, we want more service and, and less funding, and that's been really critical. And I think it's really important that our, my institutional memory on that, along with the rest of the Board Members, will really push the, the agency into the right direction. As to the, what I feel is most significant or rewarding during my tenure is the hiring of our General Manager, Jerry Estrada. I have been through three General Managers, and he is doing a phenomenal job with the situation that we have with less funding, but we need more service, and it's, it's just a never-ending situation. And I think he and the staff and the people that he's hired are doing a magnificent job, and I'm very proud of having had something to do with that and, and his hiring. And we've gone through the most successful negotiations with our drivers and the union in, in a decade. I mean, I've been there since 2003, and this was quick, fast, three years. It's wonderful. It just allows the agency to continue working on the issues that are very important to the community and that, you know, and that is the reason we're here. So, that's basically it. My son rides the bus, and my daughters used to ride the bus when they were in junior high and high school, and it's, it's an organization that's near and dear to my heart, and I would love to serve again if reappointed.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Dominguez has a question.
Thank you for your, your service in the last several years. I have a couple of questions. This, this particular appointment is something of real concern to me because of the importance of transportation, I think, and having two vacancies now that, you know, could help set the tones. I'm going to ask a couple of questions of you and the other applicant. What do you think about the decreasing routes and the impact on riders?
Before we make a decision on changing a route or decreasing a route, there's a lot of, there's a lot of analysis that goes into that. It's not just done off the cuff. We have ten, twenty, fifteen meetings from Carpinteria all to Galita. We have staff members at the universities, at UCSB, at City College. We try to air it for as long as we can. We try to get as, as much feedback as we can. So, whenever we have to do that, it's not because we want to do it or because we're not taking into consideration the population. We, we really, the staff really does spend countless hours. I mean, they, they've been riding the bus...
Do you and other Board Members go to these meetings?
There are meetings. Oh, no, yes, some of us do. Yes, we go to different meetings, yes. There's, unfortunately, there's, there's not as much participation as, as we would like, but every group does, every area has, has members. And we listen to their, to their complaints, we listen to their issues. We've... We've made lots of changes as a result of people sending in an email, a phone call, a letter that we received because we understand that not everybody can make it at 8:30.
So what is one of the
And we take it into consideration.
What's one of the initiatives that you've personally fought for or advocated?
One that I agreed with was the
Not agreed with, but like led and fought and put yourself on the line for?
Well, I don't know if I can say I led and fought. I did fight for a couple of years for the line one and two, which is the east side and the west side, because my son rides the bus. He complained a little bit about the overloads and, you know, not being able to get on and not being able to get home on time. And I've brought that up several times. And unfortunately, we've run out of specific funding. We had very specific funding for those two lines, and we've lost that funding recently. But we have improved it. It brought forward, you know, we acknowledged that we had an issue, we tried to fix it, we tried to put boosters, and the line has improved. So that's one thing.
What do you mean it's improved?
Having lived on the east side and on the west side.
What improved on the line?
The overloads. We're not overloaded and
And that's because of a loss of ridership?
Yes. And also because of our
That's the worst way we want to do it, but I understand the reality of it.
Well, no, it's also because we've analyzed when we need a booster, and when we do, we put them on. We use boosters for City College.
So let me ask about City College. So there's no line from the east side to City College, and that's where the largest number of the City College students live? So why don't we have a line running from the east side to the City College?
We do have lines. We have, I don't know if we have one directly, the one and two, but we have a line that goes to City College and picks up, and our buses there are very, very full.
So we have lines that go to the transit center from the east side and lines that go from the City College to the transit center?
Yes.
But you have to transfer?
Yes.
So it's an inconvenience, and what happens then, as you well know, is students will choose other modes of transportation. Either they drive or they don't go in the worst-case scenario, which is, again, a negative outcome. But what can we do to fix that problem?
Many of the issues that we have are funding and budgeting issues, as it is for the city council. I mean, I'm sure there's millions of programs that you want to fund, and you just can't. And we have to make a priority at some point. But if I, I don't have the number, but City College and UCSB are the majority of our riders. And personally, and I believe some of our members feel the same way, but I won't speak for anybody else, we wish that we could serve more of the community and focus on the general population as opposed to such a big group of Santa Barbara City College and UCSB, because that's where all our money goes. So even though we don't have a direct line for them, they're two of our top groups that are served.
So where, do you have more information? Are they just coming citywide, or is there a particular part of town that the City College students are using the bus?
We have a lot that are coming out from UCSB, and we have partnered with, we recently have entered into a partnership with UCSB where they are assisting us in more buses and more routes, and we've extended the routes because we have the funding to do it. Otherwise, we just can't. I mean, we have budget constraints.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Taber?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Five o'clock, huh? I kind of say the same thing every time I come up here, is that I'm always amazed at the number of talented and energetic people this town attracts, and I'm glad to count myself among one of them and having served on the Housing Authority in the past and the Cities Transportation and Circulation Committee. I've had one term on the MTD Board. My service time has gone very quickly because we've been doing a lot. We've been very busy. My first year was absorbed by kind of getting thrown under the fire. We were in negotiations with the Teamsters Union, and the PEPRA state act came in, and there were some questions made at the federal level. So our entire $5 million of operating from the federal government was put on hold until that issue was resolved. So we went for a full nine months with kind of, well, we can't survive without that $5 million. What do we do? We have to cut service by 30%. So we went through the whole exercise of neighborhood meetings and hearing all that uproar about cutting service and finally made the approval. And then pretty much the next day, the money came through. So, and then negotiations were completed very shortly after that. So that was the first year of service. Olivia already mentioned losing a long-term general manager and hiring a new one. Many planning efforts have been initiated, and I think my planning background has helped the MTD serve in that. I would agree with Olivia that her legal background has helped us. We've updated our strategic plan to refresh our goals and commitment to those we serve. We just initiated a marketing plan to coordinate our approach and to attempt to address that decrease in ridership. We're just soon starting Facilities Master Plan if that state grant comes through to address future needs. Speaking of facilities, we should have a building permit soon. If anything can do to help us with that, to upgrade our transit center, to try to get us through the next decade of service to the community. We've done a lot to replace aging bus stops, and I think that's one thing I mentioned when I was here four years ago as one of my priorities. And one thing I constantly push for is that when the bus stops look shabby, people don't want to sit out there and wait for the bus. And that's one of the things we hear at the neighborhood meetings when we do our service schedule meetings every year in April. I try to go to the two in the city. In four years, I've made seven of the eight. And that's one thing we constantly hear is the bus stops, the bus stops. So we're continuing on a program to replace those. We're replacing our aging fleet. Right now, we have 17 diesels that we bought in 1998 that we're looking to upgrade and taking the proper motions to do that and waiting for the money to all line up right. We bought some additional hybrids in the last couple of years, and most recently, finally, after many, many years, found somebody to provide us with the electric buses, and you'll be seeing those on the streets. The first ones are on the assembly line now. And we've been working with the city the past few weeks, past few months, and hopefully in a few weeks, we'll have a new agreement, a new contract to provide the shuttle service on State Street and in the waterfront. And you'll see the first of those buses, hopefully, the end of the summer. Also proud as chairman of the Finance Committee that we've begun to fund our unfunded liabilities. That's something that's been a priority of mine since day one. And just the past week, we made a large contribution towards that, have a plan in place to, within the next several years, to meet that obligation. We also have approved a much-needed policy on the use of our reserves. We've also made large investments in the capital side. The last couple of years, our staff has been driven crazy with all these new things we got. One of the big ones is AVL. Partial answer to Councilor Dominguez's question, our service plan this year was largely driven by our ability to know where the buses were and when they were there as a result of increasing traffic in the community. We can see exactly where we're losing four minutes here, we're losing five minutes here, and pretty much the entire package this year was making those little adjustments to make everything line up right. So people go to the bus stop and it's 2:10. They want the bus there at 2:10. And that's one of our goals from the strategic plan, is to have our buses there within the time we commit to. Second part of the big investment we've made is the new phone app here, hopefully by the end of the year. We're trying to roll it out with the new August schedule, but again, so we'll be like a lot of other cities in the nation. I know I've been to San Francisco and Seattle and Portland and used the apps there, and you can sit down at the bus stop and just go, two minutes, okay? So we're really looking forward to that, and I'm sure the community is too. That's going to be a large improvement for everybody. We just installed new fare boxes in all of our buses, which doesn't sound like a big whoop, but it's quicker boarding, involves less time of our bus drivers. We are able to track UCSB and Santa Barbara City College students that way because all of a sudden, they will swipe their school ID, and we'll be able to see, oh, it's a City College student. They're getting on here. Now we know where they're going. And we're also, also as a result of some comments that were made during our negotiations with the city regarding the shuttle contract, the idea of the shuttles and the parking lots downtown working together, doing that one-stop parking deal. So we're looking, working with the manufacturer now to see if we can build in the ability to read the parking ticket so someone can park in the downtown parking lot, swipe the pass, and ride the shuttle where they need to go. I think the challenges for the next three years are probably ones you're familiar with in keeping up with our infrastructure challenges. We need to push harder to improve service to those who are entirely dependent on us to get from one place to another. And the biggie that's in all of our minds in the last couple of years is decreasing ridership, which reduces what used to be our largest source of funds, which is warfares. So the new marketing plan should help us do that, and we're looking at ways with the modern technology to have to see who is riding the bus, who isn't riding the bus, and where they're going so we can improve service for those folks. Any questions?
Great. Thank you. Did you have a question? Yep. Mr. Dominguez?
I'd ask the same three. So you mentioned there at the very end, decreasing ridership is just a grim reality that you and a lot of other services are facing. What can we do? And how do you see the impact on the riders? You talked about these are people who depend on you to get around.
Well, I think with the new technology, we'll see, we'll be able to pinpoint that a little closer. We've been relying on bus driver information surveys that our staff does with riders on the field, but we don't catch everybody there. Thirty-eight percent of our riders now are students, City College or UCSB students. So your question about the City College students is very important to us because that's a large segment of our ridership, our biggest customers. But as you know, City College enrollment has decreased in the last couple of years. I live on the mesa. When I drive by the waterfront parking lot, you can now see spaces in the City College parking lot. And they are not riding the bus as much because now they can get to class quicker by driving their car and not parking out in the neighborhood. It helps the neighborhoods, but it decreases our ridership. So I think there's a number of factors that we can control there, and I think that new technology and being able to time things. One of the suggestions that was made at the meeting we held at MTD a few weeks ago about the ridership changes for the fall was that City College from the east side, get to City College from the east side, and one of the recommendations made at the board meeting was maybe we can look at next year's schedule to amend our crosstown shuttle route somehow to loop it in. So that's on the table for next go-round for our changes next year.
So that's a year from now?
Yes, we do those, we plan for them in the spring, and we implement the changes in August.
So the second question is, well, that answers it. So you're going to look at getting that service in place a year from now for the east side students?
Yeah.
What initiatives have you personally supported or fought for in your tenure?
Well, one of the big ones for me was bus stop improvements. There's limited funds, and keeping those funds in the budget every year is a struggle. We've been able to divert for a few other areas here for the past year. As Olivia mentioned, the budgeting is an issue. This is the budget we're looking at this year is the first one that's going to be brought to us where we're talking about the funding part of the budget with reserve money. So we're a little bit pins and needles on that, but we have been able to maintain the bus stop improvements. And as Chair of the Finance Committee, I think the funding, the liabilities, and the reserve policy are things I'm very proud of.
So it seems like there's a decreasing radius of this downward slide, and the more ridership we lose, the more it's going to cut into services. And I know you talked about the improvements with the GPS tracking, and I know you've had to cut routes because instead of doing four per hour, they were late, so you had three routes per hour. So is that going to continue into the near future at the same rate, a slower rate? Are we just rearranging chairs on the Titanic?
Well, it's hard to say. This is a nationwide trend for decreased ridership. There are a lot of reasons for it, and it's happening all across the country. But I think it's balancing priorities, having the bus there on time. For instance, the reductions in the east side and west side routes have resulted from service going from 10-minute headway to 15-minute headway. So the buses arriving every 15 minutes instead of every 10 minutes. But when they're arriving every 10 minutes, they were hit and miss. Now if they're arriving every 15 minutes, they're there every 15 minutes. So I think we can, if someone can rely on the service, that's an improvement, and I think that will do a lot to stabilize our ridership.
Great. Thank you.
Right. Any other?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Taber. I see two more people. Youth Council, my guessing, come on up. Thank you for your patience. If you could state which school you're from as well, because we have a long list in front of us so we can find your name more easily. And thanks for being here.
Hello, Mayor and city council members. My name is Michael Diaz, and I'm a sophomore at Dos Pueblos High School.
Thank you.
So why do I want to join the Santa Barbara Youth Council? Well, I think it's important that the youth are involved in local government because although we're not represented much in politics, we do have a voice. And I think that it's only right that the teens know and are aware of the current events that are happening around them and their community. So a couple of extracurricular groups I'm a part of are, I'm a part of the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Explorer Program, which is a group that is led by deputies, and they show basic fundamental skills and what it's like to be a deputy. I'm also part of the Blue Jacket Teenage Club, which provides charity work to families in Mexico. And I was also elected by my fellow sophomore classmates to be their sophomore class treasurer. And so those are examples of community service I do. Why do I think it's important for teens to be involved in youth leadership? Well, like I said, I think teens need to be involved in politics and their community. And I also want to be able to make a difference in my community. I think it's important. And some of the pressing needs that I see in our community is, so I've been able to attend and observe several Youth Council meetings. For example, I attended the AAA presentation on safe driving, the discussion over recreational marijuana, and the informational workshop on immigration and ICE. So some of the, one of the pressing needs that I see is the, I feel like law enforcement and the community should reconnect because that has been a hot topic in the news lately. And whether you have different opinions, I think it's, I can speak for everyone when I say that the community and law enforcement should come together to make sure and guarantee that everyone feels safe and secure in the community. And one way that I could, that I think we could do this is present a workshop, and we can invite deputies and officers there to answer any questions and to explain to the community, you know, how their job works and why they do, you know, some aspects of their job, as well as, you know, different policies they run by. And some skills and experience I can bring to this group is, first off, I'm bilingual. I can speak English and Spanish, which should benefit a lot of the large Hispanic population in the city. I was also part of YMC, which is Youth Making Change. It's another city organization. I served last year. And basically, what that was, was a group of teens who were granted $30,000 by the Fund for Santa Barbara in two different counties, North County and South County. So we reached out to different nonprofits, and we got them to apply for grants, and we all came together and discussed which nonprofits we thought needed the most money. So I learned a lot of leadership skills and teamwork skills there. As well as being the sophomore class treasurer, I work closely with school staff and I participate in almost all school events. So I have good communication skills there also, as well as I work with my sister, for my sister. She has a disability, so I work as the, for IHSS, and I know what it means to be responsible and to get things done. done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for all you do. That's great. Any questions?
No, just good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, come on up. Hello. You can put, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, my name is Audrey Zuck. I am currently a freshman at Santa Barbara High School. I have been hearing about the youth council from a very young age. My cousin was actually a member of it. I really enjoy helping people, and I appreciate all of the other people who put so much effort into doing what they can to try and help people, and I would love to be a part of that. I am a part of the MAT Academy at Santa Barbara High School, so I do have teamwork skills. I've learned to work well with other people since we do travel in groups at school. I am also a captain. I've been a captain for two years at my dance studio. I've been a captain for my dance company, so I've learned to get a hold on many teenagers. And I believe the youth council can really open up my mind and my public speaking skills. I think it's really important for teenagers to get into youth leadership because when you're older, you, you're going to have to know how to speak in front of your, in front of people and for yourself, so I believe this will really help me with that. I also believe that the youth council will also improve the skills needed in my future, such as public speaking and social awareness. I also can provide my organizational skills, and I know that may seem very odd to say, but I know that the youth council has put events and meetings together, and organizing can be a really big factor that can help into that. Any questions?
That's great. What kind of dance do you do?
All sorts.
All sorts.
All sorts.
Fantastic. Ms. Maria?
Can you tell us about Hugs for Cubs?
Yeah.
I see that listed in your resume.
Yeah. So Hugs for Cubs is a club who, that is led by one of my friends, and it's about helping kids and families who have cancer. And this past Christmas, we did a small little thing for them, and we provided them with Christmas trees and little ornaments and stuff. And it was a little thing, but it just spread happiness, spread happiness.
Spreading happiness is not a little thing, it's a big thing. So thank you. That's great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Okay, so that concludes this round. We have one more next week at 6:00 PM, and when we move on to council member committee assignment reports, if there are any. Ms. Maria?
I'll be quick. I really want to thank Laura Knight, who opens up Pascucci every year to do a fundraiser for solstice. Every, all the proceeds that night, food, drink, tips especially. And Madam Mayor, you were there. And we did our, we did our part. The library board, of course, talked about the budget system countywide, and also our library board, that's our library board from the downtown library and the east side. They're concerned about the Museum of Art Construction Project going on, not just two years, but six, so we need to look into that. The Looking Good Santa Barbara Spirit of Service Awards, I'd like to congratulate for recycling and beautification, Catholic charities, Salvation Army Hospitality House, the Mental Wellness Center, and a group called Teens on the Scene for being the award winners this year. Our Sustainability Committee this morning looked at our energy report. Yes, the city of Santa Barbara is doing its part to get to renewable energy. I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Hart.
Last week, I attended the Visit Santa Barbara annual event with Councilmember Hodgkins, and Mayor Schneider received a well-deserved recognition from the organization for her many years of community service and support for the tourism industry, and then also attended the Galita State of the City event, which was really well-attended and a great presentation from the Galita staff and elected officials. And then also participated in a press conference and a roundtable discussion with Congressman Carver Hall about Infrastructure Week. This is the National Infrastructure Week, and he was trying to draw attention to the need for federal investment in infrastructure projects in local communities.
And thank you for mentioning that. Mr. Dominguez.
I attended on Thursday the Leon Community Networking Event at the Franklin Neighborhood Center, and then later that day at 3:00, the Sergeant Promotions for the Police Department, where we promoted four of our officers to sergeants.
Fantastic. Okay, we have one closed session. Conference with city attorney, existing litigation as described in Agenda Item 13. Okay, and we will be adjourning from closed session. Thank you very much.